All right, is everybody ready? I will call this meeting to order. All right, today's meeting, we have a few agenda items. Before we get into them, I know we've kind of introduced each other, but to give everybody an opportunity to introduce themselves, I'll start. My name's Keith Ware, Board President. This is my third year. Small business owner and just trying to figure out, first term as President, still trying to figure this stuff out.
My name is Jeff Stoner. I am a newbie as a board member and I'm also an electrical contractor here locally.
David Barra, newly elected, retired police sergeant, veteran, and happy to be here. Thank you.
My name is Anthony Guyer. I'm a professor of economics and business at Arizona Western College and very happy to be here on the board.
Corey Rico, newly appointed, board not appointed, elected. Yes. And my day job is a senior global HR manager for an agriculture company that's around the world, Kalk Allen, or based out of Yuma. No, not here.
I'm Dwayne Shepard, Associate Superintendent. This is my 39th year in education and I think either my 16th or 17th year here in District One.
Jamie Shaldahl, Superintendent.
Charlotte Patterson, Policy Analyst with ASBA and retired school administrator and teacher. So that's why I smile when I talk about kids.
I'm Julie Bacon, Director of Leadership Development for ASBA. Served on the board in Paradise Valley for three terms. The three of them were COVID, so it's like I served for 30 years or something like that.
Yeah, the COVID multiplier.
Yeah.
Rob Haas, Partner at the law firm, Gus Rosenfeld, has the privilege of representing U M Elementary School District, probably 20 years.
Dennis Fonder, CFO. Like Dwayne, I've been in education for 39 years.
That's including when you were in.
Yeah, I think that's when I started school. Been in the district since 2016, so going on nine years, so enjoy it here.
Monica Navarro, Executive Assistant to the Board and Superintendent. I'm here to serve you guys. Been here for 20, going on 24 years, so I'm here to support you guys and serve you guys.
That's why you're so good.
Yep. All right, so we're moving on to our first agenda item, which is the school bathroom policy. We have ASBA and our attorney here to help guide us down this path.
Yes.
Julie, you've provided us a lot of.
I've provided you a lot of information.
Information and some presentations.
In the folder, yeah.
At this point, I can hand it over to you.
Do we have the presentation? I sent that to you, right? It doesn't matter, there's copies in your folder as well, if we don't have it for the students. So we're happy to be here to help you with the work that you're doing. As you know, local patrol is one of the main tenants of the Arizona School Boards Association, and so we are here to serve you and help you do the work that reflects the values of your community and the way that you govern. So we are going to say as little as possible, that is the goal. Shar and I just want to be here to help facilitate conversations, answer questions, and go from there. So in your folder, there is a presentation that you can take a look at, and this was, I created this just as an effort to kind of give us structure to have the conversations, but we can go any way you want. This is your time with us. So we can start with this and then y'all can tell me this is how I want to do it and we'll pivot or expand upon. Or expand upon, yes. So the second slide there, it just talks about the approach. So the question's about approach to the bathroom policy and how you want to look at that. You know, the information that we've gotten from across the nation is different depending on the jurisdiction. So I'm going to let Shar talk a little bit about the information that she's found and how we've kind of woven it in here.
Yeah. I looked at some of the most conservative communities to some that are very progressive and how they manage it, those that have policies such as this, and I've piked a lot of interest among my national colleagues who are also trying to help their districts come up with policies regarding this. But it appears that, interestingly enough, there's a couple of states that have statutes that require it, and Florida was one of the first. And when I looked at a range of policies for their state, even though they have a statutory reference, they don't necessarily have just one policy that combines restroom use because it makes it more challenging for you to be able to manage it and the consequences. So it's embedded, which I think you had the information or your committee had the information that I forwarded initially, but they do it through the Student Code of Conduct and the student guidelines and responsibilities. For staff, it's under staff conduct and consequences for violations. And then for visitors, their language is in that section that lays out the visitor's protocol and practices and expectations for when they're there. And of course, you would come up with whatever you think would be fair consequences for violators, how you would manage that. So that is one approach, but there's also an approach of combining all of it into one policy, such as the committee came up with, but it would have to be organized differently and codified based upon your final language, what you've come up with, and it would probably go under Section A for just general school administration, district administration, somewhere along there. But again, depending upon the final language is how we will determine the codification within your policy manual.
The committee, sorry, really quick, the committee, which committee are you referring to that?
It wasn't really a committee, it was cabinet.
She said to me and I said to you.
Keith, okay, so you were, I just wanted, I was not part of it.
No, I was. No, it was, it was when, no, it was, yeah, what Jamie was trying to bring.
The reporting report, yeah, 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 okay. I'm aligned.
Yeah, no, but I did a lot of research and I've still reached out to nationally.
Yeah.
And they're more eager for what.
We come up.
I can share with them on our platform, you know, on our listserv than no one really has anything yet in that has been adopted outside of the statutory guidance for the states where it is a part of their state constitution.
Interesting that that's not the narrative that's being shared, I guess, that we're.
We looked specifically at Florida and it's very general. There's not a lot of talk about gender, there's not a lot of talk about, there's talk about not being able to go into a bathroom that is not your assigned, but there's no definitions. It was, it was a little bit different than what we thought we were going to find when we were looking at those policies, so.
Yeah, I had tried to look too. Eddie Grant and I don't have many methods to look other than the internet, but I wasn't finding much out there.
Yeah, and I, and I reached out to an attorney I know whose children go to one of the Legacy Schools, and I also know someone who is, used to be a vice president with Legacy, and I could not find a statute and they both.
Or a policy.
I mean, a policy. And they were going to let me know if they could come up with anything, but Legacy did have a policy that went the other way a couple of years ago that kind of backfired on them and they pulled back from that.
Okay. So what we want to talk with you about is what you, what approach you want to take in terms of with students and employees. Is it disciplinary? Is it informational? You know, I think that's one of the things that you probably need to have a conversation about, what this policy looks like. And then for visitors, you know, how do you incorporate it for visitors? Because that's another group that is in your facilities and utilizing your restrooms. So what, what we did was we took, so we went into the J section, this J section is students. So that is on, that's Slide Three on your, could you go to the next one?
Yeah.
Yes, so this is where you, the one place you could put it in the student section, which is JIC, Student Conduct, and you can see in, there's a, there's a number up there in the left, right, the left corner of the slide, that it, that adheres to this. Corresponds with the number one.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. So in this one, we just very easily thought you could put it, you know, in this list of things that students shall not engage in improper behavior, including but not limited to the following. And that could be added, some sort of language could be added to that list. So that is one option as it relates to students.
Or you could put a sub-paragraph specifically for visitors.
Yes, but I want to make sure that Mr. Haas has time to chime in on some of these things and see if there's any issues with them.
So just a couple of things that I'd like to say at the outset. One, if you have specific questions on specific legal concerns, if I give advice to you in this general setting, then there's really no attorney-client privilege that's going to be associated with that advice. You can go into executive session, we can talk about things in as much detail as you would like on any question you would like. Happy to address general things, general topics here and, you know, so just want to put that kind of, so you guys can decide how you'd like to proceed on that. Your policies, this would touch on several things. You've got non-discrimination policies in basically three parts of your policy book. A, Section A, which is, applies to anyone, students, staff, visitors, anyone. You have a non-discrimination policy in that section that covers sex. It doesn't get into details about, you know, what the parameters of sex are, this, you know, new territory for all of us. You have Section G, which is personnel. You have a non-discrimination policy in Section G, basically parrots what's in Section A. And then you have Section J, which is your section that deals with students. You have a non-discrimination policy in Section J. All three of those cover, you know, the standard characteristics that are protected, including sex, but none of them drill down any deeper than that.
What would be your recommendation? Should we go into executive session? Do you feel that that's going to, the conversation will take into attorney-client?
I think hearing, these, ASBA is very educated on this, they're very up to date, you know, you hear them out if you've got questions, specific questions or concerns, they may be able to address some of it. Again, if you want specific legal advice on a matter, we can go into executive session. If there's a question comes up, I can, you know, decide, I can maybe give you some general information and then just you can decide if you want more or less.
Okay, so we'll just go over this framework that we came up with and then you can do what you need to do with everyone else. So this, so JIC is one place that we thought it could be, and the non-discrimination piece, we did not consider that, so that is something you're going to have to, you know, can work with your attorney on. On the next slide, there is JK, which is student discipline, and you can see that you have a JK, and it's number two, JK and a JKR, which is your regulation. I think there's certainly place that Shar and I feel like it could go in under that JKR because it is, it very much outlines the specific things that students can or cannot do. So that was another place as far as students go, that we thought you could look at that. So as far as students, that, those were the two sections that we thought would be applicable. And of course, you know, you can, you can do all of this, you can create one policy. However you want to do it is what we would like to help you with, but we wanted to kind of give you an idea of where it could be fit into what currently exists.
And let me clarify, non-discrimination was a point of interest when I was researching this, but that was something that I knew you were going to have to lean on your legal counsel to reconcile or address, you know, but it's your policy. We're here to help you have the policy that you want.
So any thoughts about the students and where you want that to go, what you want that to look like?
The idea of incorporating it multiple policies is, I admit it's new, I thought maybe it was just going to be a standalone policy, but I'm not. It's just an amateur thought, right?
What was, you said that you think it, well, sorry, you think it should be or you think that it can fit?
No, I didn't, didn't realize the idea of placing it in multiple locations as additional addition to the policies that are existing versus a standalone policy.
Yeah, I'm definitely not in favor of adding additional policies if there's a way to, for the board to feel good about putting it within a current space. I mean, I guess my, I have a couple of thoughts around, one, we have our, several of our constituents that actually deal with this from the district or not deal with this. I mean, we've talked a lot and I've heard a lot in the past year and a half about that this district is not actually experiencing these issues that may be happening in other areas. So it seems to me that it was, came out of a request to be preventative. And so if I think of it from a preventative point of view, I would think that it would maybe just be in the, which I think it already might be, like this conduct piece versus the discipline piece. I also, I guess I have pause or reservation if a kindergartner runs into a girl's bathroom that they have no idea and they're chasing someone on the playground. I think that looks different than a seventh grader that is going in there for a different reason. And so to me, there's just a lot of pause that, and gray area that I'm not equipped nor working in the schools to be able to like handle it. So to me, I see it as a, yeah, like I, because it seems like it's not an issue at this point in this district, that if it can fit within a current policy and the board feels happy with that, then I would be okay with that, that.
And I, I mean, I agree that a kindergartner is completely different than a seventh grader. I'm leaning towards code of conduct and the policies versus discipline. I think guiding people versus establishing disciplines.
Which is how the most conservative districts with statutes to support it, that's how they manage it as well.
Through conduct.
Mm-hmm, through, yeah.
Like, I don't know why the difference or why, I mean, I would be interested as to, do you know why they put it in one over the other or?
I'm guessing as an administrator, it's probably easier to administer, you know, and to delineate between infractions. How are you going to manage those infractions like you brought up?
Yeah, okay, well then that's.
Yeah, if you have a policy that says you're suspended for entering in the bathroom and kindergarten runs into the bathroom, you have policy now that.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I think, the issue, yeah, okay.
Code of conduct is definitely, leaves, leaves that situational conversation to Anybody else? You guys like the code of conduct approach?
So if it's a code of conduct, what happens if it is a seventh grader that breaks that rule? What is there to establish consequences? I'm not familiar with that. How would that work?
What's the disciplinary actions if they violate code of conduct?
You're going to have to get your district experts.
There's a range.
Right.
And I thought I saw a matrix before too.
Again, the age of the kid, what was the circumstances around the behavior? Were they, was it horseplay or was it something more nefarious? Is it a repeated offense? Is it coupled with something else? Is it coupled with maybe recording or photo, photography while they're in there? Now we've got multiple fractions, we've got surreptitious filming or photoing, which carries with it a very severe, a very severe penalty. You know, is it intimidation? Is it, is it threatening behavior? Is it harassment? So.
Defiance.
Defiance, yeah. You've been told not to do this and you did it. So given all the different, just all the different parameters, all the different potentially aggravating and mitigating circumstances around all those different things and coupling different violations together, looking at the kid's age, is the kid on an IEP? Do they have, that's why we hire principals. Okay, that's, that's why we have principals, because they use their good judgment and experience to determine what the best outcome is for this particular incident and to, I think, to, to tie the hands of the principals by saying, if a kid does this, so we've got this range of expectations for principals on consequences for student behavior, but if they do this, well then they have to do X, Y, Z, right? So I don't think you assign a specific consequence for this type of behavior. Now, we do have a matrix that's a, that's a guideline, right? Could be up to three days suspension, up to five days on the first offense or whatever. But we still, principals still have the latitude to work with families and work with parents and kids to determine if there's a better, a better solution. The goal is for kids to learn, that's what discipline means, and the goal is for kids to learn, and if you can create the situation where the kid learns and everybody is satisfied that that, that the lighter touch is going to achieve that goal, then the principal has the latitude to use a lighter touch. Like if it's a repeat scenario, obviously that lighter touch maybe didn't work the first time and a little heavier touches is, is in order. So my, from my perspective, the consequence is based on the judgment and the investigation that takes place on the part of the school administration.
So are we following current disciplinary actions or are we making new disciplinary action for those violations?
I don't, I think this becomes a disciplinary, this becomes a violation, right? There's a long list of possible.
And in the Student Code of Conduct, in the, like, for instance, one of the counties in Florida, the Student Code of Conduct didn't specify this, it was just incorporated into their matrix that it, that disciplinary action would be applied wherever they were in the number of infractions.
Using current disciplinary actions, not adding to it.
They didn't have to do anything differently, it was just, it was an infraction and as a result, there's a consequence based upon other infractions that a student maybe will violate.
And you can see possible penalties range from A to R.
Yeah, I saw that.
And I can tell you too, I'm sorry, let me just say one other thing. I sign every suspension report, okay? So if we suspend 800 kids in a year, I sign 800 suspension reports. And I can tell you that our, our principals are very consistent in the way they apply consequences to similar infractions. They're very consistent then.
So I'll just maybe weigh in and remind everybody, this is not just a student issue. You know, this could apply to personnel, this could apply to visitors, and so you need to be mindful of that.
Right.
And it's not just limited to bathrooms either.
Right.
You know, it could apply to locker rooms, overnight school trips.
Yeah.
Things like that. And so, you know, as you think about where you would like to end up, you know, I wouldn't get too pigeonholed on, you know, just what to do about kids because, you know, it's a broader topic than that, which, you know, may, there may be some advantages to having a specific policy if that's the direction you choose to go, because then you can kind of pull that all into one spot.
Good point, but question, like in Florida and other places, because that brings up a good point, because some of the ones I had read, that I found, they identified things I hadn't even thought about, right? Like parents taking their two-year-old child in the bathroom with them, right? Emergency responses, there were, there were a list of things, so I guess my question perhaps for you is, if we embed it in multiple policies in the codes of conduct, how do we make that exception for a mother that has a son that's three years old, she has to take him in the bathroom? So how does that get incorporated when we fragment it into multiple?
I think you're going to have that problem, whether you have one standing policy or it's.
Or child special needs or.
Well, if you have a single policy.
That you have an exception clause.
It identifies everything and says, these are the exceptions.
Right.
You know, rendering emergency services, you know, things like that, but when, unless we have to put that, exceptions at everyone, or you make a reference to a paragraph that's added someplace that these are the exceptions.
I think that's.
So just generally speaking, I'll say that you cannot come up with a comprehensive list of all the ways that, you know, this may present itself.
Right.
Which is why the philosophy so far has been to a general approach. You have your policy prohibits sex discrimination. You know, even the legal issues around this topic are not fully formed, you know, there's a lot of differing views on that. You've got, you know, for example, you have the agency level, you know, the United States Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights, their approach to this topic has been 180 degrees based on who's sitting behind the resolute desk, you know. President, or President Biden, or President Obama had one approach, he left office, President Trump came out with a completely different approach. President Biden came in, totally reversed course, President Trump's back in, totally reversed course again on how the executive branch, meaning the Office of Civil Rights, Department of Justice that investigates complaints that are filed on this, what standards they're going to use to determine compliance. But that's only part of the, that's only part of the equation. You've got courts that are, you know, making decisions as well, and they don't just look at the regulations, they look at statutes, they look at the constitution, and, you know, the court cases are mixed on this topic. And so that's, and I think a large part why the philosophy of the current policy language is general, because that gives you the flexibility to adapt to recent developments, gives you some, you know, wiggle room to, you know, decide light touch, heavy touch, you know, those sorts of things. Once you get into a comprehensive language structure, you know, that, that is, you're, there's pluses and minuses to that approach, and, you know, this is just very much of a gray area from a legal point of view still.
And from a practical standpoint, our student handbook, which would be the exhibit, has a clause in there that refers to any place where a student has an expectation of privacy. So what Mr. Haas was talking about, different locations and so on, field trips, you know, so, and it, it gives a long list, bathrooms, locker rooms, hotel rooms. So in any, any place where a student has reasonable expectation of privacy, then that, then those, that's an aggravating circumstance for, for misbehavior, right? And the bathroom is, is a place where a student has an expectation of privacy.
That's in your current handbook, you said?
It's in the handbook, yeah.
Where is it at?
I think it's under surreptitious filming.
I'm sorry?
I think it's under surreptitious filming, but I'm not sure.
Can you get a copy of that?
Uh, yeah.
You said it's an exhibit, right? You said it's an exhibit, is it an exhibit of policy?
Well, our student handbook's an exhibit that we give out to every, give out to every kid.
But it's not part of the policy?
It's based on the policy, yeah.
Based, but it's not?
It's not in there.
It's not, part of the nine hundred pages.
Right.
Yeah. It's gen, most school districts don't have it as an exhibit because it's generally updated annually, so...
Understand.
What, what do you mean by exhibit?
So, in policy, you have three basic elements to policy handbook or policy book. One is policy, which is, has to be ratified by board vote, and it's generally more broad, and it is usually driven by, by statute, whether it's federal or state. It can be locally drafted, which is what we're here tonight to do. Regulation is, sometimes you think of it as administrative regulation, okay? So that's kind of a more detailed policy, if you will, that, that kind of gives guidelines for how a given policy is going to be carried out. Some policies are pretty self-evident, some of them require some, some regulations, some guidelines on how the administrators who are implementing the policy should go about carrying out that policy. And then the exhibits are usually things like forms, for example. So, let's say we have a policy around responding to community complaints, which we're going to talk about tonight, right? There's a policy that says that people can make a complaint, right? There's a regulation that kind of outlines how you go about handling a complaint, and then there's an exhibit that is the form that somebody needs to fill out if they're going to file a complaint.
One you're very, very familiar with, excuse me, is the, you know, call to the audience when they come to speak to you.
That's an exhibit.
That's an exhibit, yeah.
Because you can adapt and change that, like, the board could say, we wanted to add them their LinkedIn profile, or whatever, I'm just being silly, but like, they're, we could adapt that piece because it's without changing policy.
Yeah, you develop the policies for the governance and then your administrator develops the regulations for implementing your policies, using the exhibits as...
Okay.
Supporting, yes, to help.
And regulation can be changed without board, without a board vote, but our policy says that the board should be informed if we change a, a regulation. In other words, if we decide that we're going to change the way we go about enacting a policy and we make those changes, then we should inform the board. We usually try to take it to the board, and anytime there's a policy update, like we get the policy services, a lot of times it includes regulation as well, because it just keeps us out of trouble. If they update the language of the regulation to meet the legal requirement, then we want to adopt that too.
But a lot of districts have their own regulations and exhibits, in addition to what we have are exclusive of their own, so we have options for that.
So through your research, you found that it's in policy and in exhibits or regulation?
The, well, because they're...
Not this specific issue.
No, not this.
That's what I was asking about, this specific...
Yeah, we've only, we've only found it in policy.
So if we were to put it in here as an addition, we're calling that a regulation?
No, because that's a policy.
Okay, it's an addition to policy.
If it's in the handbook...
So let's look at, let's look at, but hang on, let's look at number two.
J K R, the R means regulation.
So J K is the policy, J K R is the regulation, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I just wanted to make sure...
But they're both in your policy manual.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure...
They're both visible in your policy manual.
Yeah, whenever you, you get a new regulation created or exhibit, they're submitted through Policy Bridge, so they're on exhibits publicly.
I just want to make sure that it's not in regulation, so to say that we make this, the statement, the stand, whatever you want to say in writing, and then in regulation, they can go ahead and change it anytime they want without coming to the board, like we just said.
Not true.
The policy...
Our policy says we have to...
The policy, yes.
Says you have to take it to the board.
But then you just say that you can change regulation?
Yes, that we import the board.
But the board doesn't have...
If the board objects to our change, then of course the board can address it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just so that administration can keep you informed how they're managing the policy and implementing the policy. That's the, that's the whole purpose.
And we rarely, in fact, I can't remember changing, in nine years I haven't changed a regulation.
Right, well, I, I just thought that I heard you say that you can make a change to regulation without board approval.
Legally, legally.
Legally could, but it wouldn't, but your policy says, yeah.
Okay, so we want to set policy, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, just for the good of the order.
So basically, regulation holds the same, it has the same endurance as regulation in our case, because we have, regulation is brought to the board, if the board disagrees with the change, the board then directs the correction.
Correct.
So they have the, they're both, they have the same endurance.
So, to answer Mr. Donner's question, under surreptishing, surreptitious photographing, videotaping or filming, it's unlawful for any person knowingly photograph, yada, yada, without, with or without, it includes leering with or without a device, another person without that person's consent, under either of the following circumstances, and the first circumstance is in a restroom, bathroom, locker room, bedroom, or other location where the person has a reasonable expectation of privacy, and the person is urinating, defecating, dressing, undressing, or nude. That's in our student handbook.
Thanks, I'd like to read that.
And I crossed out the last section because we have, we, we, the sheer took this off because it, it also goes on to, I think, which is probably a legal definition type about engaged and sexual intercourse, but that, that would be a different situation.
That is, yeah, that's off the...
Here's the updated version off the website. If anybody wants to look at it.
Does someone want to?
Thank you, Beth.
So this only answers part of why we're having this discussion. It's unlawful for any person to knowingly photograph, videotape, film, digitally record, or by any other means secretly, secretively view. But this has no stance on, let's say in a locker room shower, a boy showering with a girl, because of how they identify. This has no bearing on a boy standing in a urinal with a girl walking into the bathroom. This is talking about seratipshus, seratipsius, seratipitius, that word. Photographing, videotaping, or filming.
Or leering.
Or leering. But it doesn't, it's not fully addressing what we're talking about.
No, it's not directly addressing it correctly, it's, you know, there's other policy about harassment, about, and, and harassment covers any behavior that causes another student to feel uncomfortable or unsafe in their environment. So that, you know, that's in there too. So, yeah, I think what the board is looking for is some kind of a, just a direct statement that can be added in there that refers to, refers to...
It's basically, well, it's basically protecting the right to privacy of any biological, you know, biological male or biological female, is, is what we're trying to do here.
What you are trying to do.
Yes, what I am trying to do here, exactly, one hundred, one hundred percent.
Yeah.
And early in this process, I suggested that I thought, so, there could be some amendment to the student handbook and the student code of conduct that clarified that, that language.
Okay. Now, so this, I mean, this really doesn't answer everything like we were talking about. I, I know you're talking about videoing...
It doesn't answer everything, it's just, I want to make sure that it's on the record, is being entered into the discussion, that it's, it's something that administrator has at their disposal, what they're determining consequences for a behavior.
For photography or videoing or filming.
Or, or behavior where somebody has an expectation of privacy.
We have three options, right? Policy, regulation, and handbook. Accurate?
All of the above, or all of the above.
Right, but those are the three locations that something like this can be placed.
What do you feel, Jeff? I mean, like, what, what would you like to see that would make you feel good about the district's policy or stance?
I like the idea of being it in conduct. I still wonder a little bit about the disciplinary action to that, and I don't know if maybe we need to visit that to see if there is some sort of action that we need to take that maybe if there was a little bit more aggressive, I don't want to be aggressive because, like, you know, like you guys say, the kindergarten issue, we don't want, we're not trying to do that. All I'm trying to do is protect the right to privacy of boys, the biological boy and the biological girl, that's all I'm trying to do. Whether it's, and we'll just say that, a trans PE teacher, or a girl that's trying to be a boy, that wants to go into the boys' bathroom, or vice versa, a boy that wants to be the girl into the girls' bathroom. There are children that I have talked to, their parents, that have expressed me, and I'm talking about the twenty thousand constituents that voted for me to be in this position. This is exactly why they voted me into this position, this is what I ran on, is that we will protect the biological right to the boys and the girls in these private areas. So, I like the code of conduct part of this. I think that it should probably be in every aspect that we can have it in, so that it is not missed in any way, shape, or form. And I, I'm cautious about the disciplinary actions, because like you said, there's a pick and choose of A through R, I think it was. But then, how many times does that person get to get, get to, get disciplined at level A before it gets escalated to level B, or level C, or level D? What is the level of consequence for pe, for each occurrence? Are we going to have that defiant child that wants to go ahead and keep doing it over and over and over again, and we're going to keep just giving them a slap on the wrist?
Well, I would reiterate that that's why we have administrators that have experience and expertise and judgment. But one aggravating circumstance when you're determining what a consequence is for behavior is, is this the first time or is it a repeat? If the level of consequence was not successful within ceasing the behavior, because that's what we're trying to do, then that didn't work, right? Now, again, one of the students on an IEP and, and behave, these kind of behaviors are part of their manifestation, are a manifestation of their handicapping condition. Well, if that's the case, then we have a whole different set of laws and rules that have to be followed, and then we, as a school district, need to put supports in place to support that student. So, you know, I guess my question, my answer is, I'm going to steal Rob's thunder here, it depends.
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
One of the things that I, when I introduced myself, I also wanted to mention that I worked at school for District One, I was a crossing guard and custodian, okay? I retired, couldn't stay retired, okay? Now, I'm going to share again, and you've heard it before, but I'm going to share this again. One of the things that we, as custodians, we, we see everything, right? We know what's going on. One of the things to protect our students was to maintain supervision of the restrooms during lunch hour, where the outside restrooms were supervised. Again, I've mentioned it before, male custodians here, female custodians there, reason we were there, and the reason why we avoided any problems, because we were there.
Humans were there, that's who protects the children, not the policy.
We were there, we were there to protect them, okay? But if we, if we were not there, and, and there was times that, yes, sometimes they slipped through and they did take a picture, especially the boys, they'd take a picture over the stall and put it on social media, and then we had all kinds of problems. But one of the things that we did is we gave the students that did not feel comfortable, for whatever reason, did not feel comfortable going to those restrooms, we gave them an alternative. They were able to go into the nurse's office, private restrooms, and that's where they felt comfortable. But, and now I'm going to talk, our attorney's here, and he can certainly agree with this. In law enforcement, for example, thirty-three years, you get a call of a woman saying, oh, I'm at the public park right across the street, a guy went into the female restroom, okay? All right. Unless you have a victim, there's no crime. Unless the person, just like you said here, exposes themselves and you have a victim that wants to bring charge against this person for voyeurism, indecent exposure, sexual assault, or whatever, without a victim, there's no crime, okay? So technically, if we get a call in law enforcement saying there's a guy or a man in the, in the girls' restroom, we go there, make contact, run them for warrants, check them out, but there is no penal code violation for that, unless there was a municipal code, in this case, a policy saying this will not happen, okay? So in this situation here, I like to see just, to protect our students and let them know, okay, you have an alternative where you feel comfortable, as you know, knowing that you can go do that, something to that effect, would I, you know, I'd feel comfortable.
Reasonable accommodation.
Yeah, so we make a reasonable accommodation.
To just make it more clear in the, in the, whatever that...
Yeah, yes, but you, but without supervision, and then, and then, what do we do when, when the classes are back in session? Again, that's why we need to always go to the schools and find out what's going on, we do our, our visits, is that now, what we do is we lock those restrooms, those outside restrooms, who are in transition courses, so they can't be used, they're not used, no one could slip in there or do something. Then the pods themselves has cameras in the hall, in the hallways. Then we have, in each classroom, if a student wants to go to the restroom, they sign out at a time, and they put it on the clipboard. That's how we were able to investigate vandalism, because we would be able to tell and match it, okay, that was the last student in there, let's talk to them. Usually the school resource officers took care of business and problem solved. So, we have, it looks like right here, there is already established, but I'm just saying, what can we do to protect our students to let them know, okay, you have an alternative?
Well, that's part of the writ, that is part of the writ, is that, you know, by law, you have to do that. You have to give an option to those that are not comfortable, and that, that was part of, when I had mentioned that, and the, the action item was to, for those that were not comfortable, that you give them that alternative.
Absolutely.
And that we have to do that. It's not a discriminatory thing, we're not trying to be discriminatory, we're trying to protect the biological right to the child.
Yes, yes, talk to them. So I'm just saying, we, the letter of law, spirit of law, policy, SOP, but this right here, right there, tells you, if the person, you know, exposes themselves, or voyeurism's another thing, another problem that we have with voyeurism, with, with these things, you know, people filming. So I just, that's just my experience, and I bring that to the table, let you know where I feel about this. Thank you.
I can just add a couple things. At the school level, different from the penal code, we can, we can identify areas of campus that kids are either authorized or not authorized to occupy, and if they go into an unauthorized area...
Like the staff lounge.
Like the staff lounge, yeah. Without authorization, right? So in other words, without a pass, then we can, that, you know, that, that can be an infraction that's, that's just, and also, you know, what, the, the practice at Castle Dome, when you were there, about students who are uncomfortable using the communal bathroom, that's standard procedure at every single school, every single school offers that opportunity for kids, and of course, the parents and, I mean, so...
Then, I'd like to add to what Jamie's saying, because that is very explicit in the other models that I looked at, how they manage it, if students aren't allowed to be where they're not supposed to be.
Right.
It's defined that, that is a result of, that puts them subject to consequence.
Right, so I think what we have is a decision to at least get us going down the past path of progress, right? Decide if, which of the three locations we want this to be. I think that's the first step, and then we figure out how we're going to incorporate it in there, right? The policy, regulation, or the handbook. I think all three of them are viable options, just no matter which way we want to go with that. And then we can start establishing how it's going, how it's going to read, whether it's a standalone policy, it's, it's fragmented and other policies, it's regulation, or if we're going to expand that paragraph.
I, I definitely want to see it in the handbook, because, like I said, when I first brought this up, is you say we have a verbal practice.
I said we had a historical practice.
Yes, you, you said we had a verbal practice, more than one time you said that. And that verbal practice, my argument is, if it's a verbal practice, how, when, and where is the child and parent being notified of this verbal practice? What are the implications of violating that verbal practice? How, when, and where is the child and parent being notified of those infraction rules? They're not. It's being, and, and that's where I want, that's, let me finish.
Okay.
That's where I think it needs to be in writing, so it doesn't matter if they come from New York City or if they come from... from New York City, or if they come from Crandall School District, they read that handbook, and they acknowledge that this is the rules. This is going to be where we are drawing the line, that you are not allowed in this, if you are a biological boy, you go into biological boys' areas. Biological girl, you go into biological girls' areas. And it needs to be known and acknowledged by the parents and the students in the handbook. It also needs to be in policy, because you're going to have to use the policy if you ever have to go to court and fight over it, that it was set in policy. Regulation, I'm still not quite understanding where that is, or where that comes from. So maybe I could be, you know, have a little more clarification on that, but I know at least two out of the three, for sure, I would like to see them in both of those locations.
Okay. Just, you know, I'm just going to say this one time. I said we have a historic practice, not a verbal practice, I don't use that, that's not part of my lexicon when it comes to how we conduct things. We have a historical practice, and it's based on societal norms and societal expectations, and our bathrooms are labeled "boys" and they're labeled "girls," and any student who feels uncomfortable using the bathroom that's labeled "boys" or labeled "girls" for them, then we work with the family and come up with a solution. So, if the board determines that this needs to be some sort of, you know, and I think that's why we're here, much more explicit, sex-based, prescriptive policy than Soviet, but, you know, how do parents know? How do parents know when they send their kid to West Wetlands that they're going to, that they need to use which bathroom they need to use? How do they know when they go to the ballgame? How do their parents know which bathroom their kid is expected to use? So, you know, these are societal norms that I think if we're going to start going down a road of trying to delineate every societal norm that we historically have practiced in our schools, we're going to significantly increase the size of our of our policy manual and our student handbook. And that's, so that's my position, and I certainly respect the board's authority on this, and we respect the decision that's made.
So with everything you just said about that, why do you have other policies as far as theft, vandalism, all the policies you have in your handbook, when those are societal norms out in the public too? Do you think that child, when they're going to go to Waylands, is not going to do graffiti on the walls? Do you think, you know, you're saying that we shouldn't have this here, you're going to respect our decisions, but it seems to me that you have been fighting this decision. And I'm going to ask you again right now, did you or did you not, in the meeting that I had with you, Faith Klostryk and Pastor Tyrone, say that you had verbal practice?
No, I said historical practice.
You did not.
Did you?
Jeff, this is, we're getting nowhere?
Yeah.
Well, I know, but I'm just saying.
No, 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 hold on, hold on a second. We're getting nowhere. We clearly know you don't like Jamie. Jamie's retiring. We need to figure out a path forward. Hold on. We can compartmentalize, which is what we need to do. I don't care about your 20,000 constituents, that's great, because they ran on a golden ticket, that's what you want on. We want to be real here.
Okay.
But, hold on.
Point of order.
Hold on.
Point of order.
Okay, but to this piece, okay, but to this piece regarding the bathroom policy.
Corey, you're doing the exact same thing.
Okay, but let's hold on.
So we're going to put an end to that.
We need to move forward about this decision. Let's not blame.
Point of order. Okay?
Let's move forward with it, let's make a decision.
Thank you.
But why aren't you calling him point of order? Come on.
The two of you are going back and forth now.
No, it was, it was him with him. Be fair, let's go. Let's make a decision.
We have a decision to make.
Yes.
On where to place this.
You already, we already agreed on a policy that we're going to make, let's make the policy. Let's make whatever you guys want to do, let's do it. We have an hour.
So now we have a standalone, or we're going to do broken? So we put it in multiple policies or a standalone policy? Jeff, this is your?
I like multiple policies that are already in the conduct, and I like it in the policy here and in the handbook, to go with the parents and the students.
Okay, so.
So for staff, you would put it in staff conduct, which is item three here, GBBB. It could also, I suppose, go in the employee handbook as well, if you're adding it to policy. And then for visitors, you would want to look at your KI policy.
Can I just
Yes.
Offer up some, so if you look at JIC student conduct, there's no regulation currently in your policy book that goes with JIC student conduct.
Right.
I don't get involved in 99.9% of the student discipline cases, thankfully, but when I do, there's, you know, a lot of interest in them. So just kind of walking through how I would, how I would approach something like this. So you look at student conduct, and the policy on sub-letter I, knowingly committing a violation of district rules and regulations, proof that an alleged violator has a reasonable opportunity to become aware of such. Okay, so then you look at, okay, where are the rules and regulations? And that's why these policies are typically general, because you can't come up with a comprehensive list. And so, without a regulation, then I'd look, okay, where are the school rules? And that's really the handbook. People would look at the handbook, the homerooms, go over them, the parents sign off on them. And so, from a enforcement point of view, you know, this is sufficient. You can add more to it, if you want more detail and things like that, but that is how, you know, if I was asked, okay, how are we going to, how are we going to approach this situation? That's kind of the thought process that you would go through. The student discipline policy does have a regulation to it. Again, you can add, you know, you can add another, you could add language to that. The student discipline policy, one potential trouble spot, I will say, is the second paragraph, "The discipline, suspension, expulsion, and pupil shall not be based on sex," among other characteristics. Okay, well, what is sex? That's, that's, that's the unresolved legal issue. That if you get too far out in front of where the courts are, you can do that, but you're taking on risk, because you know, I'm not, I'm agnostic as your counsel on this, you know? I, what the, what, I count to three, I do what three people tell me to do, you know? But I'll say, you've got 20,000 people, well, all it takes is one on the other side to say, "Hey, this, you're disciplining me based on my sex. I went into the bathroom that aligns with my, you know..." The whole argument is biology, psychology, you know? I went into the bathroom aligned with my psychology, I got disciplined for it, that's a violation of this policy, and, you know, because of that, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to sue you, and I've got all these alphabet groups that are going to come in and help me do that. That's, you know, that's, that's the risk. You know, again, three of you want to do it, five of you want to do it, I'll help you get there as best we can, but I wouldn't be doing my job for you if I didn't say, you know, "Hey, it only takes, you know, 20,000 to one." That works in politics, you know, in the courtroom, that one person's going to be heard. And so you just have to be mindful that if you get too far in front of where settled things are, you can be, you can be a trailblazer, I'm not saying you can't or shouldn't, but these things take on, you know, a large amount of community interest, they're very divisive, they suck up a lot of time and effort and resources, and, you know, it's just something I'm not saying what you should do, or how you should do it at this point, I'm just saying, these are some of the things that you should be thinking about as you decide your path forward. But, you know, the approach to how you would say, "Hey, you knew you shouldn't go in there," whether it's the bathroom, or the teacher's lounge, or, you know, the equipment shed, or whatever, that's, that's how it would, that's how it would go. You look at, okay, you knowingly committed a violation of district policy or rules and regulations, those regulations are set out in student conduct regulation, there's student discipline regulation in handbook, you know, those things that kind of drill down to those more granular levels.
And as the only parent in the room of kids in the district, like as a chaperone of the practice, we just had a meeting for SeaWorld, very clear in the meeting at the school about what I'm expected as a female chaperoning my son's SeaWorld trip, and what that looks like, and what I can and cannot do. When I was a chaperone at the science camp for Dorothy Hall last year, there was parents that came and said, "Well, I'm, he's a mama's boy, and I want to go, and I want to be his cabin leader," and they say, "You can't, you're a female, and your son's a male, so you can go and be a chaperone, but you have to be a chaperone in the female cabin, and your son will have to stay with a male." So, that's why I was a chaperone for my daughter, and when my son goes, my husband will be. So like, to me as a parent, the practice is happening, and they're very explicit about bathrooms when they're having these conversations, so that gives me peace of mind, that I know that, you know, right now it might not give you peace of mind, Jeff, but that they're enforcing these practices and these historical norms, and they're explaining what that means in today's world as a parent going into that, so I just wanted to say that.
And you're a good parent, you're doing the right thing. But there are some of those that are not doing the right thing, and you've seen that, it has happened. Maybe not specifically right here, it has happened in the US. We have been at that tipping point where people have pushed that line. Or those that wanted to identify the other way tried to go and push the line, and tried to be able to sleep in the same hotel room as the opposite sex, and had tried to be, and in fact, I can tell you, in Redlands, California, high school football team had girls on the football team, that when the game was over, they went and showered with the boys. Now, I know we're talking high school level, but that does trickle down to the little brothers and little sisters. And what mom and dad is allowing to the big brothers and big sisters, they will allow to the little brothers and little sisters. So I'm trying to be preventative in this, and the snippet in the butt, before we do have something happen here, and before we do have a lawsuit on our hands, because we didn't have a policy in place, because we didn't try to be protective of those kids.
You're saying proactive instead of reactive.
Exactly, 100%, let's be proactive in this, and, you know, I can say that there has been attempts by a boy dressed as a girl in a junior high school here in Yuma. And it wasn't written down in any papers, so that's why it doesn't exist. But it has happened. And I can tell you that I know that.
We've gotten to the point, I think we're going down rabbit trails and not getting any progress done. So, you've established that you want a policy, and you've confirmed that handbook and policy is the location that you want this.
Can somebody, I need to be educated, I guess, or I need somebody to explain to me about the regulations portion of this, because we said there's three entities. We have policy, we have handbook, and we have regulation.
So your regulation is how you define the specifics of the general policy.
Okay.
So it just depends on the regulation, it depends on the policy, what the regulation says. You know, when we, like, if we looked at, like, public concern and complaint, it's very specific, this is what you do when you get that form. You start here, you go there, so that's kind of what the regulation does. It outlines for your administrators and your staff, the process that you use if the policy is violated.
The execution, maybe, of the, okay.
Well, then it would probably need to be in all three then.
Well, some of these might not have a regulation, it would just depend on what you pick. For example, your student conduct policy does not have a regulation. But you could put it in the handbook. So.
So we put it, yeah, we put it in the policy, and then it's been reiterated in the handbook. That's like showing the...
Yeah, you reference it, it'd be a reference point.
Yeah.
Yeah, it answers your question, so we have policy, and then the handbook is the answer to the parents getting the information.
Right.
Because I doubt any parent has gone through the 900-plus pages of our policy.
Right.
Right? So, the handbook is, captures the important things for the parent. It answers that aspect of your request, the policy. I don't, doesn't sound like regulation is the best place to put it then.
So you have policy BGD, Board Review of Regulations, that's the language that addresses, you know, beyond setting policy, which the board obviously does, how the regulations are developed and approved and changed.
I, to your point, from a legal point of view, and I see, Jeff, the like, the national situations that are happening, and then to be preventative here, and so how can we be, how can the board feel good about, good enough about being preventative, but also recognizing, like, I think the word that you used was like not get too far ahead of it, to then be like the only trailblazer in the entire United States, and have all these people wanting to like file suit against the fact that we did it? I mean, I guess how can we find a balance of being able to put this in place and feel good about it, but also to the point around the area of concern, to be general enough that we know as a district what the policy is, but to also protect us legally from that piece? Like, where's that balance, you know, between the?
Right, we're not scholars on how to do that.
Yeah, exactly, that's why I feel like, how can we, in the wording piece, be able to take the suggestion around being general enough, but also making sure that Jeff and the board feel, you know, good enough about the policy?
Right, so who is that director?
Well, we can help draw up language with Rob cooperatively, collaboratively, and provide, I'm assuming suggestive language.
Usually you buy your policies from ASBA. If there's a specific policy that's not in their general menu of policies, they can help you with that. Obviously, we would be available to advise you on that as well. And, you know, we work with, we work hand in hand with ASBA, for the trust, or whoever, all the time.
So it looks to me like the recommendation, if you call this, because I think that's what it is, and is what is the best approach, rather than a standalone policy, the way you approach it here with multiple policies and adding additional information in there, and then from that, the handbook can be updated. And you being the drafter of the policy, I think that's where we should leave that, is in your hands to, as Corey said, let's make it clear, but let's stay out of the lane of two terribly far ahead of things, because I don't mind being a trailblazer, but we want to make sure that the board is comfortable with the policy.
I mean, I did, I did bring two standalones, just so you could see them.
I'd like to see those.
So they're, yeah, they're in your packet.
Six and seven.
So six and seven. Six is the, I believe, the policy that Peoria recently passed.
Now, these were standalones.
Yes. Six is a standalone, seven is just a draft that, that I think the superintendent's cabinet.
I liked the standalone on six. The only change that I would say on that is where it says, "Privacy for women and girls at school sports events." Really.
Which one, Jeff? I'm sorry.
Number six.
Number six, yeah, where's the paragraph?
Very first, at the very top. It says, "It is policy of the board to provide protections and privacy for women and girls at school sports events." This isn't about just women and girls. This is about boys and men too. So I would like to see that.
Privacy of, basically, teachers, visitors, students, who are at the school and school sponsored events. Right, yeah, you can change that.
That's probably the only one thing that I would change in this, if we were to adopt something like this, because I did read this one, when it went through, I did read this. And that's the only thing, is I just want to make sure that, you know, I'm being clear that this is not just about women and girls, it's about biological boys and biological girls, biological men, biological women, both sides of the sexes.
And add the word biological in there.
Well, we're just saying women and girls, we're not saying women and men, boys and girls.
Peoria's policy has a definition of sex.
Yeah, you have to define it to use it.
That's number three.
Right.
And this also is, I'm assuming they did this for students, because it's a J-section policy, so it's not... policy, so it's not in all three locations, if I'm correct.
This is a section J, which is student.
Just students. And I know you identified three different populations, right? Students, staff, and visitors.
Visitors, yes.
So, well, this...
Well, seven does that. I like, like, it, there's like C, right? It talks about And staff and volunteers is B. So it's number seven has all three in one, right?
And then also I'm wondering why, what am I missing here on that paragraph versus "Policy of the board to provide protection and privacy for women and girls," with the definition of number three says sex refers to female and male. So why not just put female on that top part? Is there a reason for that?
Well, that, this is their policy.
Oh, I get it. You get it. Okay.
We didn't, we didn't write this.
Yeah, this is just giving you something to see.
All right. Thank you.
So we're deviating.
What did you say?
We're deviating, right?
Well, I don't know.
I'm trying to get down the road.
I know, I know we are, but I don't, we don't want to leave here and then have them, have...
No, I understand. I understand. But I just want to make sure that Jeff was fine with your approach. Now we're considering a standalone policy.
My approach was to bring both things to you. I'm not going to make a decision for you. Yeah? I got to present all options.
You just have to make the decision.
I would submit that, again, well, the board is going to prevail here, but if a visitor comes onto our campus and they go into the wrong bathroom, they're breaking the law and they would be trespassed. And they would have no recourse and say it's not, be able to say it's not a policy in our, in our school. I don't think they would have any recourse if we, if some visitor came on and they were intentionally going into the wrong bathroom. It'd be a pretty serious offense. And they, the visitor has to be checked in, they're verified.
Right.
And I can't imagine a scenario where a visitor, made it a college campus, I could reconnect and just go on to campus, but what are our schools?
I know.
I just can't even imagine a scenario where that's going to happen without it being a pretty huge incident. But I mean, you can, you can add it. I just don't know if that, I don't know if it's going to change anything.
You know, and to answer your point, one of the things, I just refreshed my memory, we have after, after-school activities. We use gym for all these activities, be it wrestling, basketball, you name it. We open those same restrooms I tell you about. Adults and visitors use the same restrooms as their students.
At those events.
At those events. And again, we go back to the, if someone makes a mistake, unless you have a violation of the penal code there, if someone mistakenly goes in there, and remember, all of our stalls, at least at Casper Dome, have privacy stalls, okay? In a stall, there's no open, okay? The urinals obviously are all open, but when it comes to the toilets, all of them are individual stalls, okay? So if someone goes in there, makes a mistake, goes in there for whatever reason and uses it, what are you going to charge that person with? Yeah, we don't, unless we have a policy saying, well, you went into the restroom, the wrong restroom, but as far as the penal code, what are you going to do?
Basically going to tell them to leave.
Exactly.
Hey Cory, on number six, if you go to overnight trips and exceptions, I think that answers what you were talking about, about mom and, mom and child.
I didn't have a question about it. I was just stating that they were, because as a, in that particular case, as a cabin, there's more than just one child in the room. So you're a, you're a cabin mom or a cabin dad for six children, so it'd be different if I was in a hotel room with my son.
Right.
But in these cases, you're in a, you know, where SeaWorld, I have several children that are multiple, like, different genders. And so going into the restroom with my nine-year-old child that doesn't have, it's not on an IUD, it's not a need.
I like this, honestly.
Which one?
This.
Standalone.
Standalone. But as you're, as an attorney, which one are we in the more gray area? Are we more protected going into separate segments or are we more protected going into a standalone?
Well, I guess my thought would be, a standalone is going to be more visible to more people, I would think, than, you know, tucking it into several of the different policies. But a lot of it's going to come down to whether it's standalone or, or, you know, split up into different places. Your community's going to want to know what, what the, what the expectations are, what your position is.
And a challenge will be a challenge.
Some of it's just going to be, you know, making sure that, I just like the idea with the student handbook, getting the information out to, you know, the parents and the kids and staff. I mean, if you put me, if you put my, hold my feet to the fire, I'd probably prefer a standalone policy. Either way, you could, you know, it, your concerns can be addressed either way.
So if you're, I'm sorry, I just have a question. The standalone policy, though, if they want to, we would have to incorporate all three of those entities that they were talking about.
Well, you mean, yeah, sure.
So it wouldn't be exactly like this.
I don't know that you have to have one in A, G, and J, but you're going to have to address staff, kids, and visitors.
I think you're taking the clouds out of my head. I like what you say, that we aren't burying the policy within other, as an addendum to existings, for people to have to hunt and find. This will be more visible. So, yeah, I, I want to go to standalone. But again, there's five of us here. I shouldn't be the only one making this decision.
This was your, your agenda item.
So my, my wish would be to go standalone.
Would that still be in the code of conduct?
It can be split in the, not the entirety, but...
Yeah, well, I mean, this, this, right, 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 but it would be mentioned. Okay, so people would know about the policy.
Right.
That it exists.
They wouldn't be able to miss this because it's not buried in, you know, in other existings. Handbook, policy, and regulations.
I think your handbook includes copies of a number of policies. I mean...
Right.
Be easy to, I mean, you'd have to do it for next year, but it'd be pretty easy to plug it in.
Right. Yeah, this year, we're already pretty far into the year, so I don't, I don't plan on this being actually in this year's stuff. I think we're looking at 25, 26.
So we're all good with having Julie and her team go through six, that one you're holding?
I like six over seven, yes.
With the adjustments that we, with three groups of people?
Correct.
So what about changing some of the wording?
Yes, I would like to.
Like I mentioned.
Yeah, we would, we would, we would have to change it anyway because it's not just for students.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you're looking at incorporating...
Yeah, again, the privacy for women, down there it defines sex as female and male.
I want to include both, both sexes, not just protection, privacy for women and girls.
Right.
For female and males, and then it's defined down there by sex.
Or you could just say student, staff, and visitors.
Yeah, that's what I'm, that's what we said in the beginning of that. It will be. What we're, what we're saying is that top sentence where it addresses females only, we're saying, we're asking Julie and her team to edit this to cover the three categories, students, staff, and visitors. And throughout, anywhere inside of here that it needs to be. That's what we're going to ask them to do.
Yeah.
And I think if you go, use the purpose from seven as opposed to where they talk about males and females, replace that paragraph with that kind of language that...
Which language? I'm sorry, which language?
I'm not a policy graver.
Right here under purpose for number seven.
Okay.
That and replace this paragraph that talks about women and girls.
Okay.
With that, with, with the purpose, your objective with the policy.
Right.
Yeah.
And that's the, the advantage of you being here is to hear everybody's concerns. It helps you while you're drafting for, for us to review.
I, for the exceptions piece, I know it could, we've talked about it, could, all the different areas, but like, an area that I do see to be, like, especially in our schools and knowing our ESS population, it just says, "In the case of young children," but I wonder if we need to incorporate language around, like, there may be needs of a physically handicapped, handicapped child that, I mean, so to me, I just want to make sure we're inclusive of the population we're actually serving.
Maybe we need assistance.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Assistance of the opposite sex.
Still, you'll make, no, medical assistance, under aid.
Or assistance with their activities of daily living.
Well, we're not, we're not, yeah, she's right. We're not addressing special needs in here.
In the exceptions.
They would need assistance.
In the exceptions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll take all this back. And Shar will create, no, together we'll work on some language that then we'll send to you and copy your attorney and then you all can have discussions about it.
Where did you say this number six came from? What district or where?
This is from Peoria.
Oh, okay.
And again, this is just student section, so...
Yeah.
Well, maybe just say you sent it to me. We both kind of work out any bugs before we...
Before we send it to them, of course.
That's, that's agreeable.
Yeah. Is that okay with everybody?
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, no sense in us seeing it if you're not going to approve it, right?
Ain't that the truth? Okay, so let's move on. We, we talked about most of the presentation already, so I, I wanted to just, the other thing that your superintendent asked to talk about is slide nine, which is language that allows governing board, granting governing board members unrestricted access to district information, including but not limited to, so that language is right there. And so this is something that, you know, that I know we wanted to have some conversation around. I did want to bring to your attention that there is HB 2067, has very similar language on it, and it's still active in the legislature. HB, it's on the top of it, 2067.
Oh, okay.
I know that we're moving forward. Did we, did we approve this? Is this is what we're...
No, they're, they're going to provide us a draft.
Okay.
You provided us direction to draft. There was nothing here for action.
There's no action.
No action in this one. No.
So I just wanted to kind of let you know that, that, that language that's in 2067, which is a striker bill, is, is similar to this. And I am just interested in thinking about having your conversa, having a conversation about that and also what Mr. House thinks of a policy like this before their statute.
Okay, so this proposed bill would be contradictory to what is your current policy language, which is BBAA, Board Member Authority and Responsibility, which basically says that, you know, I'll just pull it up here. Individual board members exercise authority over district affairs only by way of votes taken at a legal meeting of the board. An individual board member has authority only when and to the extent that the board by vote has so delegated such authority. That policy language is pretty much parroting an Attorney General opinion that indicates a school district board member has no power or right different from any other citizen, notwithstanding the statutory powers of the school district board, which may only be exercised by the board unlawfully convened as a body. That's the Attorney General's opinion, which has stood unrevised and unchallenged in court for decades. So that, that bill language would contradict what you currently have and what the Attorney General's opinion is on the subject.
That's probably BBB.
BBAA.
BBAA, yeah.
BBA.
BBAA.
BB.
And again, you know, if there's specific questions, we can go into executive session. I've got just kind of a 30,000-foot overview. You know, some of the, some of the reasons for the, I think that underlie the current policy language and the Attorney General's opinion is that the board's authority comes from the board acting as a body. There is no real statutory authority given to an individual board member. The board president, I don't know if you guys have a clerk or vice president, but there's some language, policy language that tasks those people with certain authorities, creating the agenda being the most obvious one. But to have an individual board member being able to demand of staff that you provide personnel records, student records, medical records, there's all kinds of concerns with that because, again, as an individual board member, the current state of Arizona law is that, you know, you're treated, when you're acting as one person, unless the board has specifically taken action to say, "Hey, we want you to do this on behalf of the board," you're really no different than, you know, John Doe walking in off the street. Now, the reality is, the staff is going to try and accommodate you more than they would accommodate John Doe walking in off the street, but push comes to shove, that's, that's the legal standard at this point. And so to say, you know, "I, as an individual board member, want immediate five work, five business day access to anything," now, there's some wiggle room in, in the, in the statute, the proposed statute, but, you know, it'd be interesting to see if that statute, if that bill goes anywhere. And if it does, then, and it's inconsistent with the Attorney General's opinion, and obviously the statute is going to take precedence over that, so...
So would your...
I don't see, I don't see an urgent reason to be getting out in front of the legislature on this. If the bill doesn't pass, then you may want to revisit it.
How, how soon? Just because, like, how soon do you think we would know?
Well, by June. I mean, the legislature's basically sign, die. I'm saying that, right? It's done by June and then...
That's what we say. And then, but like, so your, I guess, recommendation would be that if we revisit this in August, let's say, when we reconvene for the school, to see what legislator, what statute says, and then we...
So the one question, you know, I'm thinking as a board member, right? And if this, if this was our, a policy in my school district and I asked for information and inadvertently shared it, would, would law, the law protect me or would it not? Because it's, you, like, am I, because I'm acting outside of what currently is in statute?
Sure. So there's statutory immunity granted to boards when you're acting as a board at a board meeting. Your votes, you know, if somebody doesn't like it, there's immunity given to you in those situations. If you're an individual board member, again, not tasked by the board to do something, then there's not that statutory immunity. Your insurance policy is, still offers you some protections beyond what, you know, the statutory immunity is. But, you know, the more rogue you go, the more Lone Ranger approach you take, the more risk that there is to you personally in doing so.
I think that where he's going with this... I think that where he's going with this is like it says, to move to approve a policy granting board members unrestricted access to district information, including but not limited to curriculum materials. I think that that's where, if I'm not mistaken, that's where you were wanting access. You're not wanting perp violations, you're not.
Personnel records, I mean, as an individual.
Right.
Yeah, I I really don't. For me, it's the curriculum. That's that's what I want to see.
So that's, you know, that's where it stops. It's not about personnel. It's not about the children. It's not about any perp violations. It's about curriculum.
Exactly. I have no interest in seeing an individual's personal information as an as an individual. I don't. I put I, as an individual, would like to go in and see curriculum if I so choose so. And if the board would delegate each one of us to do that, I think we should be allowed to do that.
I think where it's getting confusing is where it says including but not limited to.
Yeah.
So maybe that's where we need to pull back on that or maybe be more descript on exactly what it is. If there is something including but not limited to, what else, what other than curriculum are we wanting to look at?
I think curriculum.
So maybe just
Would be fine.
Subtract that, including but not not limited to, and it's it's basically, we want curriculum materials. We're not looking at grades. We're not looking at students. We're not looking at personnel. We're looking at the curriculum, period.
And I just want to say again, I have no interest in seeing anybody's personal information and their HR record that works for our district, but I do have an interest in seeing the curriculum, as I've already stated.
So from attorney's perspective, if a policy for the curriculum access, that's effectively the same as taking a vote for each action item, correct, as far as the justification?
So if you had a policy that said a board member could have unrestricted access to curriculum, you wouldn't need a particular vote to designate that authority to the board members. You know, of course, the devil's in the details on this. A lot of that curriculum is, uh, purchased. You have licenses who can access it. There's copyright, uh, things associated with it. So, uh, you know, conceptually, uh, again, the devil's in the details on that. You would have to maybe add some language that, you know, would have to be consistent with all of the, you know, all of the, uh, copyright holders rights or, you know, something like that. I'd I'd need to sit at my desk and think about it to give you a complete, a thing, but a complete explanation, but, and there there are other issues beyond just, hey, I'm interested in curriculum, you know? And so I I want to want to see that.
I have a couple of questions, I think, that might maybe add to the conversation. So just kind of playing out a scenario, let's say a board member goes to inspect the curriculum and they find something in there that they believe could potentially be objectionable. What happens then?
I would think that they would take it to the board. Is it a, is it an information item?
So who's the complainant then? Cause we have policy about, so what what I, I'm operating under the assumption that the board member, just out of their own curiosity, not in response to a constituent concern, right, wants to the curriculum, right? Cause if it's, if it's in response to constituent concern, we have multiple policies about how we manage that. So the next set section is if there's a concern about the curriculum, right? And you're an individual board member, regardless of whether you've been given authority by the board to examine this curriculum, you're, then you're the complainant, correct? If you find something that you find objectionable, that you want to be, uh, reviewed, right? The policy is that a person who has a complaint or a concern about, uh, learning materials has, uh, needs to fill out a, uh, form and exhibit that states what what curriculum materials they're they're concerned about. And then that gets submitted to, uh, to the school administration and the administration reviews it. Okay, so, uh,
Would it not?
Is the board member the complainant? And if so, is that, does that, then that it would be incumbent upon that board member to to fill out the form and go through the process. I'm I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how to go. So then beyond that then, so then let's say that it's reviewed administratively and we say something that's happened before. The part of the curriculum that you identified is not something that that we teach in our classes. It's something that, uh, maybe through a keyword search or something came up with materials that are outside of our scope that that doesn't get taught in our schools. Whatever the scenario is, the administration says, um, that that is, it's not, that that is, that it's okay, that's not, you know, that that it's not gonna be removed, okay? So then, to play it out, so then the complainant, who's the individual board member, would then have the opportunity to, uh, appeal, right? So they could appeal that to the board. Well, now does that complainant, do they have the opportunity to then participate in the decision?
Well, but but members of the pub, members, other members of the community that aren't on the board can't add agenda items onto the agenda for a meeting. I, as a board member, can do that and I should be allowed to do that.
But what I'm saying is we have a policy and recommend and and regulation about, um, public concerns and complaints about instructional resources right here.
Right, there there, you know, it seems like such a simple thing as a board member. We want to look at the curriculum and there seems to be a lot of push against that. It just makes no sense to me. All I want to do is look at the curriculum if I want to look at it.
Right, and if you find something.
And so I think I should have that right. And so here we are. It's just, it's just bizarre to me that you can't go in and, you're an elected, you're an elected position on the board. You don't have the right and just look at the curriculum in the district for which you've been put into this position.
Well, you can't.
Neither does Jeff.
Yeah.
Neither do you, neither do I, neither do you.
Yeah, yeah, you can't.
You actually do.
Yeah, we do. We talked about this at length at the meeting, Anthony, that we do, they have a process for that. And so we do have the ability to do it, just like a parent has the ability to do it.
But you know, we're kind of revisiting the same thing, you know, I've already gone, sir, nobody wants to hear the story about me again, how I sat right over there and went through that.
Right.
So that's the process. That's why we, as individual board members, need to have that right, so we don't have to go through that silly process. As a board member. So, yeah, to go back on what you were, your your process. I mean, it just seems silly. It's so silly. It's so silly. It's like, why the push against board members to be able to look at curriculum? It's like, what are you hiding? Well, and if you're not hiding anything, let me see it. I mean, we approve curriculum, right?
Yeah.
So we should have a right to be able to look through the curriculum. Right. It's that simple. Right.
So, again, by policy, you can't create any more rights than you, than the legislature has given to the board or to an individual board member. You know, you can't create a policy that says you're, you know, a ruler of the world and have everybody think that you're gonna, they have to respect that. That's an extreme example, but, you know, your policy is constrained by what what the the grant of authority the legislature has given to to not just you, school boards. And that constraint presently is that an individual board member has no greater right than anybody else to access that information. Now, the public, the general public has significant access to your curriculum materials. And it's my understanding that curriculum material, the selection of curriculum materials is board approved. And if a board member wanted to say, you know, I've got a concern about this, if a board member files a complaint or is a complainant against the school district, well, you don't get to vote on whether your complaint's a good one or not.
Right.
You know, that that's, uh, because your vote would probably be yes, you know? That's not, in order to cast a vote, you have to be fair and impartial. And if you're a party to the dispute, then you're not fair and impartial and you're, you would have a conflict under your policies and should recuse yourself, you know, from from participating in that item. But, so, um, I I don't want my, what I'm seeing today to be construed as trying to limit a, you know, access to curriculum. There's already, you've already got policies in place that grant very substantial access to anybody who wants to view the their curriculum material.
Did you say significant access?
Yeah.
Like the way when I was sitting there and I couldn't look at whatever I wanted to, I wasn't allowed to go through it by myself. That's the problem. So that's not significant. With all due respect, sir, that is not significant access.
Well, I don't know about a specific situation, so I can't comment on that, but, uh, you know, I mean, you have a policy that talks about public acts, public ability to review the curriculum and a and a request, you know, to file a complaint or to ask for reconsideration of that. Again, at, as it currently stands, individual board members do not have any greater access to, uh, things, information than a member of the general public unless the board tasks a board member with doing something on behalf of the board. So that, you know, that's kind of where things.
Yeah, thank you for that. What what was, what was the agenda? I know that we passed an action item at the last meeting. What was the specific wording of the action item that I brought forth?
It's right there.
Okay.
Well, the wording of the action item was that we, that the board would consider a policy.
Move to approve a policy granting board members unrestricted access. Okay. Move to approve a policy. Okay, in that, that was seconded and that was passed. So now we approve a policy. We've already gotten past this part. We've already voted to approve a policy. That's already been done. So it kind of seems like we're sitting there talking about why we shouldn't approve a policy when we've already voted on it, saying we would.
Oh, this was voted on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we already approved it. So why are we, why are we wasting this time?
I didn't, I didn't know.
No, no, I didn't mean that to you. I mean, generatorically, why are we wasting the time as to why we shouldn't do this? We, as a board, already voted on doing it.
Right.
So let's stop wasting my time and everybody else's time. Let's get on to it. I think that maybe what we're trying to get through is some of the rewrite, if you want to call it that. And that's fine, but we just need to approve something. Not just sit here and talk about why we're not gonna approve it. We approved what we could on that, uh, but maybe it is a rewrite. I I agree with you that it it kind of seems like we are going back and forth on. Yeah. You know, trying to reverse what's already been approved. Yeah, so, um, again, if we want to just talk about, um, curriculum materials, that that works for me. I'm good with that.
Okay.
So I want to, I want to have a policy that we already said we would come up with, that's been done, approving how we're gonna be looking at the, have access to the curriculum materials. So let's do it.
Okay, hang on a second. Shelly, you want to add something?
I just want the board to consider that there are other policies that come into play, okay?
But we've already voted on this as a board.
I understand, Anthony. I want to hear what Mr. Haas has to say.
What I want the board to consider is if the board passes a local policy or passes a policy that's in conflict with other policy, then there's significant potential for conflict down the road where you have two, where you have conflicting policies, okay? And when you play out the scenario I was saying, for example, like Mr. Haas said, if if you take it upon yourself, as the person who's investigating, um, then you become the complainant if you find something that you feel that you don't approve of. And then you you remove yourself then from the process of of decision making at the end. Because you, it's like if Mr. Evaro, when he was a police officer, he couldn't, he couldn't go, uh, investigate the crime and then adjudicate it at the other end.
Jamie, I see what you're saying, but this is something that needed to be mentioned before we voted on it. We've already talked about this. We already said, we've already said we're gonna approve one.
Right.
Yeah.
So why are we discussing why it shouldn't be done or it's in contradiction with this? We've already voted on it. We've already voted on it.
Yeah, but Anthony, I agree with you, Anthony. And but this is, I think, to maybe what Keith, what you're gonna say is where I think as a board, because when when it was talked about, I had no idea that, one, there was the HB two zero six seven and I didn't also realize that there was, I knew about.
Before you voted on it? I mean, before we voted, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, so when you brought it up.
Right.
Cause one, I didn't know it was gonna be on the agenda and then until it got on Friday, which is fine.
Right, right.
And so, but I think to your point that this is maybe a norm that we need to figure out as a board is before we do these things that maybe we have the sessions first to be able to have the attorneys, because you're right, I didn't know.
Right.
And I don't feel good about trying to create something that completely violates, one, what statute currently says and two, that there is a bill that's in there. And so to me, a pause is different than not creating it yet. So if we pause to wait to see what the legislator says, then we're not dropping it, but we're also being careful about creating something that's in complete violation of what the statute says.
And I want to, I want to, I want to get some clarifications, because I believe, I understand what Jamie's saying. I think, and this is where hopefully you can chime in on this. In a situation where the board says, hey, we need to take a look at curriculum X, Y, Z. Board says, hey, we want Anthony to go do that. We vote on it. He goes out and does it. Does that exclude him from being able to vote on it? I don't, and my thought is because the board's empowered or directed Anthony to go out and look at the policy, he's not gonna go through the standard complaint process that a member of the public would, because the board has specifically asked him to go out and investigate. And then he brings that back to the board and he's then, and that scenario allows him to vote on and be involved without that complaint process. Is that correct?
Well, um, because, um, he takes each case by its own facts, obviously, but, uh, if there's not a complaint, you know, and and he's, a board member is coming back to say, this is what you asked me to do and I'm coming back to report on this, then, uh, potentially see a pathway to that board member still being able to vote on something.
I also, really quick, I'm trying to think of, um, does my kids access like digital contact and stuff? In our work, like our digital content actually has our employee information like attached to it. So I don't know if that's the same within the district that if the digital, like digital content that the kids are using are attached to like student information, which is what.
Sometimes they are.
Okay.
Digital content's a completely different animal and each platform is different.
Yeah, that was just my, cause we were talking about earlier about separating.
Access to that platform.
Kid information with that, but if it's tied, like I know at work with my HR platform, like it's tied to our ADP, which has all information of employees. So I just worry about, that's a whole nother, I know you had brought that up earlier. That's not what we're talking about right now, but the legality behind that piece too, I guess, was just something that came up for me that I was curious about, because I know in our case, you would, if you had access to our digital content, you'd be having access to the same system that is connected to my employees' record.
So obviously, student records are confidential.
Right.
Personnel records are confidential. A lot, I, you know, uh, I don't, I don't know enough about how you would access the curriculum materials to see if there's, uh, if it's just the generic, uh, platform that the distributor has or if it's already got student information embedded into it. The latter scenario would be, you know, would raise significant more concerns than the former scenario would.
Of course. Um, but again, I'm just going back to my, uh, with any type of computer system, you know, when we had NCIC, we'd have to have a login, to be able to log into that system and be authorized to go on, password, the whole thing. With the curriculum, we would imagine we'd have to have a password to get on to it, right? So, so would that be for each school board member or as you stated, would be one person that we designate to use that password to gain access to that curriculum? How would that, how would that work out?
Well, it it depends and it could, could very well be that if, I mean, generally, each one of those passwords is attached to an account, right? So we'd have to purchase additional accounts.
So the teachers, if they want us to.
And the fact is, the one that Mr. Guyer wanted to look at, um, even with a password and an account, it would have had to been a student account. and an account, it would have had to been a student account. That would have been the safest way, because that particular platform has what you're in under an administrative account, which is what we had, that you're in, and there's student level data that's, that's there, the FERPA violation. I just want to say this, okay, because I'm retiring. You guys need to set that guy up for success, okay? When you come in with requests, you owe it to him.
Who are you talking about?
Dennis Ponder.
Oh, okay.
You owe it to him to tell him, give him some context about why you want to know, okay? Give him some context about the background that led you to this request. Give him some context about what you intend to do with the material once you see it, okay? If you want to have a good, a good relationship with your new superintendent, then be transparent. Be transparent about why you want information, what led you to this request, and what you intend to do with the information, okay? Because quite frankly, the, what, what happened, what your request that you are upset about, where you didn't get to navigate, came on the heels of a situation where we had a very finite after-school program that had been approved with either six or eight lessons, where parents had to sign their kids up to take, and we had community members gain access to the curriculum and then go and research this curriculum, which included not only things about peer pressure and, and dating, but all the way through, all the way through college-level material or adult-level material. And they took that out there and they used that against us as a school district, okay? So I got to be honest, when you were completely opaque about your, your request, you gave me no context, I did not, what did I have to hide? What did you have to hide, was what I thought. Who are you, are you on an errand?
Well, that's really sad that you would think that. I, as a board member, just wanted to look at some curriculum. So for you to think that is really problematic to me. And yes, I plan on working very well with Mr. Ponder. I think, I think I already have a good relationship with them.
It's sad, it's sad that what happened, happened. It's sad that we went through a semester of hell. And if you want to know what was in that curriculum, go back to the June 2022 board meeting where Dwayne Shepherd walked through every single lesson that had been approved, and you'll find out. And, and that, that information is still going around, and that information is still being used against us. So it's sad that as a superintendent, I feel like I have to sometimes protect the district from the board. And if you had been, if you had been transparent, if you, if it was somebody who's, who had the concern, you could have followed the procedure, that person could have come in, we could have shown that person the curriculum.
You would have shown it to them like you showed it to me?
Yeah.
Or that's not significant, that's not good enough.
Because what we showed you was the material that our students have access to, right? And we didn't give you access.
I wasn't able to go through and look at, and I'm not going to argue with you, I disagree with you, and I plan on working very well with them, so thank you very much.
Good. Please be transparent in your requests.
You've already said that, I've heard you, I've already heard you.
Come on, let's be cordial, let's be cordial. All right. Look, so we have policy, we have current process, and then we have the added piece of it where, which I didn't take into consideration, I don't know if any of us did, about if we go out and find something on our own that potentially is going to take us out of voting on whether or not that gets removed or how we address that item, right? It doesn't if a board member says, hey, I think we need to go look at this curriculum, and the board votes on it, tasks them out to go do that, they investigate, come back, now they can also participate in the board discussion and the vote.
Could we do, I might have missed this when I went to the restroom, but like, could we do that like on a case-by-case, so we have a, so yeah, something comes up and we, like you have an agenda item, and then we vote on like who may-
I'm not sure if you were here when, when we were advised that if, if I go in and look in a policy and I find something that I think we need to change, right? No direction from the board. I come back to the board and I say, hey, but, I'll get back to what you said, because I'm going a different, but if I brought it back to the board, that it precludes me from voting on it, because I'm the complainer.
Okay, yeah, I was there for that. Yeah, so me, I was just thinking of like, to move it forward, the, the, maybe the current state would be, or desired state would be right now, that if there was a particular curriculum that's not, like, the math is open right now because it's in process, but the science one, that then we would just have it as an agenda item and then vote for whoever that particular person, that would be a way to give the access and not violate-
But also protect them. I think that's the important part that I want us all to consider is that the integrity of being able to vote on it and have the discussion, because if you have to recuse yourself, that's from discussion too, right? You just file a complaint and forward it, and you don't get to have a discussion on what you found, you have to annotate and report. So I think, at least until this SB-
HB.
Or HB 267 comes to whatever it does, that we have the opportunity that if any board member, and I think that we can all look at each other and say, look, if any board member wants to, to look at a curriculum, that they should get a five-vote yes to move forward and go do that, because that allows them the opportunity to bring back more in-depth conversation and discussion, and to be able to participate to vote if there is an action item that comes from it.
If there's it.
Wait, a five-vote yes, is that what it's?
Well, basically what I'm saying, yeah, basically what I'm saying is that nobody should, if you come in and say, I want to go look at the, the science curriculum, it should not be a four-one vote.
Right.
It should be a five-vote.
Yeah.
The board members should be all united, saying, yes, go look at it, find what you find, or maybe you're not looking at to find something, maybe you're looking at it for whether it's still relevant, right? And you want to come back to the board and say, I looked at the science, and Bill, and I have the science guy, just doesn't do it, right? Not for eighth grade. All right, so now we get to engage in that.
Okay.
And you get to participate in the vote, whereas if you go out separately on your own and you find that it's inadequate, you can fill out the, the forms as a, as a complaint, but then when it comes to the board, because you can appeal it to the board, you can't participate in discussion or the vote, because you haven't been specifically tasked by the board to go out, find something, and bring it back.
And President, if I may.
Sure.
Another potential option could be to, when the curriculum, I assume you have a curriculum committee to review curriculum and, you know, make recommendations, the board could also designate a board member to participate on that committee, and that way they would be embedded in the whole process.
Yeah, we talked about that in one of the board meetings.
Rather than having a committee do all the work, and then a board member say, hey, wait a minute, you know, I want to, I want to look at this.
Yes, no, I think that's a fantastic, and we go subject by subjects, because, you know, I get PE, you guys can have the rest of them, so it's about the only thing I'm going to participate in. Everything else is over my head.
Is the what? PE. Yeah, like the math, that's why I made, I made that suggestion, because like Anthony is, this is what he does, and he like, I look at the math and it's foreign to me, so I would nominate him to be part of the curriculum committee, because-
So I guess what I'm doing is I'm asking, can we perceive, we can table this. Let's proceed forward with the idea that the board empower individuals that want to look at whatever curriculum they want, also want to make sure that we get a board member, and I don't want to assign a board member to do all of it, I think when we have new curriculum, we should assign a board member that it aligns.
Yeah. If it's CTEs, that better reject, because I have no idea what.
Like I said, PE.
Yeah.
But this way, if a board member comes in, we, we all say, hey, we'll, we'll give you the opportunity to go and, and dive in, we'll vote, send you out, but then you get to participate in, in the discussion and the vote on whatever it is that you're going to, that person brings back to say, hey, we need to find a new curriculum, we need to talk about taking out this chapter, or whatever it is. But I, I think that offers you what you're looking for with additional results.
And one, one other thing to also be mindful of, I think, is a board-approved committee is subject to the open meeting laws, so, you know, that includes posting the agenda, opening access to the public, creating minutes, you know, all of that sort of stuff. But if it's going to be a board-approved committee, then there are those additional concerns being as well.
Okay.
Going back, it has to be a five-o vote?
No, no, I was just saying that-
You were just saying we should all be in agreement with it.
I don't want you to, to vote against me having access to something, right? It should be, we should all say, yeah, anybody wants to bring up a-
Okay. In a perfect world, yes, we should all agree, but as long as we have a majority, if it comes down to a vote, then it's got it.
All I'm saying is for Anthony's security.
In the spirit of teamwork.
Yes.
If I hadn't reiterated it, if you don't mind.
What's that?
Would you please just reiterate it? I mean, I think you were just already continuing.
Yeah, I can't, I can't imagine a situation where a board member would want to look at a curriculum and they get a three-two vote, right? I think that would be a really bad day, because why would we, as any individual board member, say, no, I don't think that Keith needs to go look at whatever curriculum, right?
And if I may, I think that's a great approach, and it also gives the opportunity for discussion after you have a motion and a second, and then somebody can say, what is it about that curriculum you're curious about looking at?
Right.
Oh, I do like that one.
Because in that conversation, somebody else made-
Why this curriculum? Let's discuss why it's fifth-grade science that we're interested in.
It opens up the door for other board members, as long as we don't do a quorum, to say, I would like to go with you, Anthony, I want to see what you're looking for, that looks like something I want to check out. So, you know, it opens the door to, to team up, partner around, but get the information, bring it back to the board, be able to discuss and, and take action items.
So you're saying it has to be, so I would, so run me through it again, a hypothetical, if, 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 let's say that, let's say that, I don't know, Jeff wants to look at some curriculum. So run me through the process, please.
All right, so then Jeff would put it on the agenda and say, I want to look at the math curriculum, hopefully we've got one coming up, but it's, let's say it's an existing curriculum.
Okay.
Goes on the agenda, we get to that action item, we get a first and a second, we have the opportunity to discuss it, right? So then Jeff has the opportunity to discuss the reason he wants to look at it, to check whether it's still relevant, he wants to look for specific things that might be in there that he doesn't think should be in there, whatever the reason is. Have that discussion, then he goes to a vote.
Okay.
And we vote on it, should always be a five vote, in my opinion, but not just my opinion, but, you know, I can't imagine-
Okay, so that's the one thing that I would want to do differently, I just want it to be a majority.
It is, it is. I'm just saying that it should be a five vote, because everybody should support the board member-
You were hearing about that. Oh, okay, but it's still just a regular majority.
It's a regular vote. It's a regular-
He's manifesting how we are going to work collaboratively, and that's what he is.
Positivity, aspirate, aspirate.
Sorry, sorry, no, it doesn't change.
He is hopeful.
And hoping, fingers crossed, every time, yeah, every time a board member wants to look at curriculum, it's a five-o vote.
Right.
That's, that's all, but it's still three to get it across the board.
Right, okay.
We did not change the rules on that.
No, we did not.
I'll say that's-
It's in the notes, right? It's in the minutes.
So that sounds reasonable to me.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, is that?
Is that good?
Yeah.
So then I'll ask the powers that be, since I don't know, we do have an action item we voted on to establish a policy. Now, do we put on the agenda to then table this, to, how do we, how do we correct the situation?
So did you first read it, or did you approve it?
We just approved.
We had a written, oh, you have a written-
We just approved writing one. We had, we just let it die.
We just asked the action item saying that we would.
Can it just die?
Oh, that's what I thought, I thought-
Yeah, I brought it up as an action item, and we actually voted on it to say, we will, we said, let's do this session to discuss it.
Does it just die if we don't take action?
I, well, it, you'll, as soon as this passes, you'll know it will be part of the policy advisory.
Right, but I'm talking about our motion, right? So we have a motion that was passed.
Yeah. But you don't have to take this up again.
No, you don't have to, right?
We don't have to take any action on it.
I think what he's saying is we currently have something that was approved, so do we have to go back and reverse that somehow, or will this action that we've said to build the policy just kind of die on its own if they don't, don't it?
Well, I think you can, I think Rob can yell.
Yeah, sir.
Wait a minute, are we going to wait, or are we going to do that?
No, no, we're going to find out what we, what our options are.
Oh, okay, because I'd like to do what you just said now and not wait for that.
Oh, you're okay.
You can do that anytime. You could always do that. That was always an option.
Okay, so why, let's put that, let's make that the policy, that's what I'd like to do.
What's that?
What you just said, what you just said.
It is the policy.
It is.
Okay, that's the current policy.
It is the current policy.
Okay, so I, as a board member, can come up and do that?
Yeah, you could ask, you could, you just shoot me an email saying I want to look at this.
So you're okay with that action right now, Anthony, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so to that piece, are we able to go back and say, we're vacating this, or whatever the-
Yeah, you can, or, you know, bring it back up for modification, yeah, you can do that, or you can just basically pocket veto the-
Yeah, pocket veto, don't talk about it ever again.
And get to it.
All right, fair.
Yeah, so we have no, no further action on this in, in meetings, and we all understand the process now.
There's no timeline on when you had to come back with a policy, then you'd get to it when you get to it.
And then if and when-
Or you can come back and revise whatever is actually-
Well, and if, if 2067 passes, then you're going to get an advisory from us telling you what the policy should read.
Correct. Okay.
What it looks like, you know, in the model, so you can-
And that kind of mirrors what he's trying to do in the first place.
Yes.
Yep.
Now, is everybody okay with that? Jeff, are you okay with that? Mr. Evaro, are you okay with that? The board, you said you're okay with that? I'm assuming.
Yeah, well, I think-
Just don't vote me on the math. Okay.
I got PE.
I got CTEs.
There you go.
Okay, right. So, we're good on that. And now we've gotten to our, so we're going to go to our, our third one, but I don't think that-
I don't think we need them.
We don't need the Phoenix people for this.
No, we don't, the travelers, we don't need the travelers.
Taco salsa, Fourth Avenue and 24th Street.
That's what I was going to ask you.
But thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
Sitting here, sitting here and smelling that.
That was good. That was my breakfast.
Well, it would be mine.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Bye, thank you, bye. Nice meeting you.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, everyone.
Yes, sir, nice meeting you.
Appreciate it, sir.
Just for the record, of course, your insurance company is paying my fees, this is not coming out of email mention.
Oh, that's good.
I mean, it will be when the rates go up.
Yeah, how many UCs get your help?
Right.
Better late, I, late than current, I suppose.
Thanks, Rob. Have a good night, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck making it to school.
Thank you.
Are you getting weepy?
Huh?
Getting weepy?
Yeah.
Hardly strings a tear to my eye. All right. Onto our third item, develop a resolution affirming the board's commitment to public district schools. This one, Rico has brought to us, Cory. So what we're looking at here is a, I guess I can read this out of the way, a resolution. I assume everybody here really understands, especially after yesterday's meeting, what a resolution is.
Yeah, I liked the military family resolution. That was cool.
Did you take that handout, I think?
You mean this one?
Yeah, that stat. I know you, I, did you draft a, okay, good, because I did too, and like the, I only, I only made five. I'll just pass them on down. And she can pass it back to us, but, um, yeah.
Well, thank you.
I think there's a couple of things that I wanted to kind of clarify with you, Cory, because it, there were two, two focuses, I think, in the, in the meeting yesterday, right? One was student focus, and the other was public school focus.
Are you asking, or you're, you're saying there was two thoughts?
Oh, sorry, 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 there were two thoughts that crossed through my head. Right, that's, I heard two different things.
Um, no.
Wait, wait.
Right?
Yeah, one is the resolution she drafted, and the other one is what Keith-
This one is, yeah, there's, this is hers, this is Keith.
Okay.
Okay, got you.
Where's Keith's?
This is Keith's.
Yeah, I don't have the adopted this day of 2025.
So we need to get-
I have Cory's.
Yes.
Okay, so we just look at this one here.
Does it have an export?
Go on that one, just like, maybe five more of those.
So we'll just take a couple of seconds to read through them.
I don't have yours, but she's gonna make it.
Okay, alright.
Do I not make them?
Alright.
Didn't even ask if anybody else made one.
Nope.
Oh, thank you. George?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
I do, I just got it, thank you.
Keith, do you have Keith's?
No, this one, I think you have mine.
Yeah, Keith's is the one.
Cory's has this down here.
Okay.
Keith's doesn't.
Alright, got it.
Everybody good?
Yeah.
Mr. Barrow? Need some more time?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Cory? Good?
I'm good.
Okay. Alright, so we have two. Two of these, whereas's. And I, I, when I was opening up, when I was brought, it's two separate thoughts that I'd heard in the conversation during the meeting yesterday. And I think that our focus should always be centered on the child, right? And I, I mean, a resolution that supports public schools, that truly putting the children first and what's best for the children, I think is a very good resolution to have. Question goes down to details, right, writing. And considering it's taken us two and a half hours to get through two things, I think this, this may end up breaking up into another meeting at some point, but I'm here for as long as you guys want to stay.
I got my sleeping bag.
You got your what?
Sleeping bag.
Oh, oh, I have a babysitter, so I still have all the time.
So what I had heard in that, in that conversation, two separate things. One was a resolution to public schools, and one was a resolution to the student. To the support to the public schools and the support to the student. They're intertwined, right? You can't separate them. You don't have one or the other. My thought is the focus on the children develops the public schools, the district, right? Our, our district was developed around and is constantly changing and adapting around the children, because that's the focus of public schools, is the children. Without them, you don't have public school. I don't see, and I, and I think if I heard you right, correct me, otherwise I'll, I can just stop talking, but you want a resolution to public schools.
No, I want, so how systems level theory like works is you have systems level, you have group level, and you have individual level.
Mm-hmm.
And we can't focus on the all children, because we are legally and want to serve any and all children in our district. We can't focus on the child and be student-centered if we have a system that's not being supported. And so to me, to your point, I think they're absolutely intertwined, and so that's why when I was, and again, I'm not married to like all of the wording in mine, I just tried to take a shot at it, so we have something to work off of. Is you have a system that we much, mu, we must support, because we cannot have a child-focused, um, system. We cannot focus on the children if we do not advocate to support the framework that is supporting them. If we do not have the foundation, you will not have a stable house.
Mm-hmm.
And so, to me, um, there's various pieces of this, but part of that is advocating for equitable funding. We've talked a lot, we've had, I am thankful to Mr. Monder that you're able to like dissect it for us to understand. But we understand the reality of our funding situation, so much so that we're now looking, thanks to you, like creating a committee on how can we be creative to try and find these solutions.
Right.
So I think that's part of it, is advocating for the equitable and sustainable funding, so then we can be student-focused. Um, we can have these CTE programs, we can do those things. Um, again, the policies, the actions, we talked about it today, I mean, the reason why some of these things have taken so long is there's been a lack of trust, and we want to move forward with that, building of that. Um, and so to me, they are absolutely interchanged, uh, and they're connected, interconnected, but if you do not have a stable foundation, we cannot serve all of these children. And so, to me, you cannot, you're right, you cannot have one without the other, but if you do not have a healthy home, it's very hard to raise a very healthy child. And we know that, and we talked about it earlier about, thank you for being a good parent, but there's other things. So to me, we have so much data around it. We know when we have awesome preschools, that O C Johnson can frickin' kick everyone else's butt when it comes to reading and other areas. We know those things, so we know those things, it should be easy for us to state that we're supporting both of those things. And I don't think anyone's arguing this, or not that I've heard, and I hope not, but like, some of the things that have been sent to me, um, especially after last night, is some policies around what they think my job is as a board member. And two of them were teachers within our district, two at O C Johnson, that we should be representing the board and the district and the public, and to the public in a manner that promotes both interest and support for this district. Um, we took an oath of office that says I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of the board member for Yuma Elementary School District, number one. And so, to me, there's just, it's what we already said we're going to do, but for some reason, like there's been some broken trust within the group. The community and certain stakeholders in the community are just wondering, like, why can't we say we support public education? Like, why can't we, like, what, why can't that come out of our mouth? And it obviously can come out of my mouth, but to me, I just think it's intertwined, like you said, and this is literally a proclamation. It's not a policy, it's not a, it's literally a statement that we're just saying, yes, we do believe in you teachers, we believe in your system, we believe in you principals. And Matt, with this E S S population that continues to grow, like, so to me, I guess it's just, I like some of your wording that you have here, I recognize that public education's not in there, but I, I think it just, how, like, how can we connect both of them? So we're stating we're supporting the system, which then, and if it, it trickles down to be able to create the best optimal place for learning for all of our students, no matter the background. So that's all I have on that, and I think it's just critical to making it, making our statement and, and that this is what we are gonna do as a, this is what our, our North Star is as a, as a board.
Okay, yeah, I think we're saying the same thing, just with different words. We both agree that it needs to be center-focused, and my thoughts are, the, the idea of supporting a child brings all of that that surrounds the child, the infrastructure, the educators, funding, that type of stuff was the, if you can say that you're successfully su, supporting the children and that's your center focus, then those things are what you focus on, or you, you address, so your focus on the children's success is successful. If that made any sense.
So may I ask, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I was gonna ask, so, so are you saying the idea of public education in general, or does that also include the current state of controversy in public education? Uh, you know, the divisiveness?
Yeah, I think that-
So I'm wondering, so, I mean, see my, so here's, public education itself, I do support completely.
Yeah.
But when it says the full and unwavering support for public district schools, I don't support some school districts or district schools across the country that I feel like they're doing something wrong.
You can't.
So this unwavering and full support, I don't support that, you know?
So you're, you're saying like maybe having it different?
Our district, I don't really see any of those issues. Of course, you can school district one, I completely fully support, right? Public education itself, the unwavering and full support.
And, and what she said in the beginning is, this isn't, neither one of these, we're not asking you guys to pick one or the other, we're not asking, this is, she brought something to the table.
Examples of-
I brought something to the table.
That we can then create, yeah.
Create our own, uh, taking that, because, and she said she's open to rewording things.
Yeah, I mean, I, again, I think even just a proclamation saying, we believe in Yuma School District One and the public education that it serves, that what, what our duties are as a public education institute, because you're right, I have no idea what, whatever is happening in Nebraska.
Yeah, yeah.
But to me, I think that it's a, and you're, you're absolutely right, that the divisiveness of the world is creating a narrative
Right.
that is seeping into all of our worlds, on both sides, you know? And so to me, like, we are a nonpartisan role, honoring and, and serving children.
Right.
And so how can we say that, like, because you, it, things are not as mutually exclusive as we think. Sometimes I feel what, and it's my feeling about it, based on comments made, that if we say that we love public education at Yuma School District One, that that means that we're crapping on every other option. And that doesn't what that mean, that's not what that means.
Okay, I was actually making a reply.
Yeah, is that, you can be, you can have your views of school choice, you can have all of that.
Mm-hmm.
But to me, as a district, we, we got elected to run to support and make this district better, and part of that, after knowing about the auditor general, like, I want my taxpayers to be equitable. And so if my kids are being held accountable in the state testing and they're losing sleep over it, I, you better believe I want to charter schools, I want to see their grade, I want to see that, or I want to see the, the auditor general report, because that is still my taxpayers. So, but again, that, I think you can believe in both systems. And so to me, stating that we believe in this system is not, even though you may think it's like a narrative, it's, it's not saying that I hate the rest of the, and I think that to me, to your point, is the divisiveness that the world's telling us to engage in.
And, and so by supporting that, that doesn't mean that I think that it's perfect, that's it, I don't think-
I, well, no, I got that, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make that, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright.
No, and I think that that's part of our, our, our obligations in BBA too, is responsibilities, our job is to actually find creative ways to make it better.
Right, okay, yeah, like a learning organization, because, um, right, I know
Yeah.
just about everybody in this district works really hard, I know that, you know, obviously the teachers, the administration, and so, Monica?
The best.
Yeah, absolutely, so, so, yeah, okay.
Just a thought here on now therefore, the District One Governing Board reaffirms its full and unwavering commitment to making District One-
A vital public institution or something?
Yes.
To me?
That, that puts us in a position where I could say, I absolutely support District One. That doesn't mean I'm gonna lift a finger, make a decision to make it better, right? It's great, everything can be improved upon, everything needs to adapt and adjust.
So I have like here that the District One Governing Board reaffirms its full unwavering support to make Yuma School District One a vital public institution, instead of all?
Yes.
Okay. A vital. And again, I don't want to, like, this, you know, should be a simple process, like, it's not gonna, it's not creating a policy other than what we already should be doing or whatever, so I don't have any more comments about that.
How about the board support Yuma School District One? Something simple.
I guess what I was, because when I look at what a resolution is, right, is you have a message and a focus, and I think we- And I think we can all say that we want to improve. I mean, I'm hearing great ideas, the, the facility, um, committee, CTE, the 4H. You know, the, these ideas that are, that are coming up in the board meetings is showing that all, every one of us wants to do our part to try to improve.
Yes.
An already good system.
How about something like, uh, we support Yuma School District One? And it's something to the fact that we realize it is a, it is a learning organization, or is that the term, learning organization? Always open to improvements or something like that?
Right, but I think that's what the, to make School District One a vital public institution.
Yeah. And I was just looking at, um, cause I know proclamations are all, but like the whereas of all that. I was just looking when I made it, like, I was looking at the ones that we've done already and like the one we did last night, whereas, and it gives some information about what does it actually mean, so that's why I, um, try to make it short and sweet, but also capture what we're gonna be doing and what we're gonna, we're telling the community and the world that we're, um, took an oath to do, so.
So what do you mean by equitable funding for all students? What do you mean by that? According?
Where, where do I start, I guess?
Just one example, please.
I mean, Dennis Ponder talked about yesterday, like, what, um, or even we can go to the site, is the site building funds, where like, there's $200 million and we're, you know, but they use that $200 million so quickly and we don't even get, you know, we have all these, how many, how many projects are on the?
About 50.
50, and they, they're telling, uh, his name is Mr. Tamayo, that, that like, sorry, you can't even, even though we know our, you know, Jeff has gone to how many schools, has been like, what the heck is going on here? Like, those are those type of things to me, where the, the raises for the teachers, where we're like, we want more. And then Dennis is like, well, this is what we have, and he's like trying to be strategic that, so those are the things to me is that, it's one pot of money that's being drained, but there's no, and this isn't, we can't do this, this is legislators, you know, to like, how can we make sure that we can sustain what these kids need? That, um, I keep using you, Matt, just cause I see these ESS numbers, and you're gonna have another one, cause we're moving someone to Yuma for gallon who has a child with special needs, but, um, I am worried about these numbers that keep going up, but yet the funding we get for them. And so we continue to try and provide them these same resources, cause that's what's great about Yuma School District One.
Right.
But yet we're doing more with less, and we know that that's not sustainable, so those are just, um-
Fund actually, we're the redheaded step child of the state, yeah.
Yeah, we're the only one that was like, and you mean your thing, we didn't have any colors, no, whatever funds, no, all the other, we, like-
We get crumbs.
Yeah. So to me, I mean, I think, I think of it even of the water issue within Yuma, and like, what's happening because of these situations of us being outside of the, so. I, I do wanna say where I, um, cause I, I wanna be, um, true to my ethics, and I think maybe that including political divisiveness, like, I, I like to think of things half-full versus half-empty, so maybe we just take that wording out. Um, because I don't wanna create more, like, I want us to model what we want to show the world.
I was gonna recommend we stay on the positive side and take that forward.
I, I thank you for that, cause I had that circle too, I was, I was waiting to have a conversation.
To me, I, I mean, I'm okay even if, I would love if we had all the other pieces and if you took that piece out, that's fine. I mean, obviously I have very passionate views on that, but I also don't want a proclamation that is, even though the intention is not to divide, I don't want it to create more division. So if you guys want to scratch that, and then the rest is very positive, focus very, like, what are, I'm okay with that.
I, I would appreciate that, but also I think that, you know, now is a perfect time to ac- actually have that conversation and talk about that. You know, to me, you know I'm very passionate where I stand. I know you're very passionate where you stand. I don't call it politics, I call it the love of protection of a child. Maybe we have different views of how that child is to be protected, and maybe that's why we're on different sides of the fence on certain subjects. But never once has it been a Republican, Democrat, independent issue, in my opinion. Um, it's, it's where I stand as a Christian, as a conservative, and it has nothing to do with politics. It's 100% protecting that child, period. So for those people that are out there that you saw in the surveys, you brought that up many times, my name specifically in those surveys. You know, they can say whatever they want, they can call me whatever they want, just don't call me late to dinner. I have tough skin, it doesn't matter to me, I know where I stand, and it is not political. I stand on my own two feet when it comes to that decision. Nobody told me to say what I said. Nobody told me to stand where I stand. That's me standing up for myself. So as far as the divisiveness, to me, it's not political, I think it's just viewpoints. Or maybe conservative versus liberal, and again, that doesn't mean politics. It just means the way that we value certain ideas.
Yeah.
I think that some of this, where you've talked about several times before too, is that we, we need to get together as a board and as the administration, and you don't know the disconnect. Well, the disconnect was just exposed itself today with me and Mr. Sheldon, I don't trust him, he has lied to me. And Anthony Guyer doesn't trust him. So there is that disconnect, there is that lack of trust. I wish that it was different. I like you as a, as a person, I've been in Rotary with you, I've been around in public with you, I would shake your hand and eat dinner with you. But on the business level, I don't trust you, and that's just the fact of the matter. And I think that's the same way that Guyer feels, and I'm not gonna say anything about anybody else, but you wanna talk about-
Let's stay focused on this.
I mean, yeah.
I'm just saying, well, I'm just-
We're getting in and out of staying focused on this.
Well, we were trying to talk about lack of trust, and I'm trying, I'm trying to address the lack of trust.
Yeah.
I, I wish the trust was better, and I, I really do, I'm sorry, but I'm being very honest with you, I wish the trust was better.
And I think part of that to like a solution for us is like even today, where, you know, the attorney's telling us stuff like, oh, yeah, that's good information, where, I don't know, I didn't know that, is that, um, honoring how the board should work. And part of that is like, I don't think anyone likes surprises, but giving moments of pause to be able to be curious and ask questions before we just throw something on there, because we, we're getting ahead of ourselves a little bit. And so to me, I don't know what that's gonna look like, a quarterly, like, work session like this, whatever it may be, but to me, to that exact point, is being able to talk through things-
Absolutely.
Before that happens. And to that, just so I'm very clear, but like, to the trust piece, what I wanna get to is that you can actually come to us before things are posted to the world, and before you go to court. Because that is what deteriorates trust. And one act of mistrust takes two years of lots of really good trust, trusting actions to rebuild it. And so to me, as you were honest with me, that is what I expect as a board member. And we may not agree, and I am okay with that, that's actually the beauty of a team, we should not, there should be tension. But we need to, um, honor and own and commit to talking with each other before we go and make assumptions. It's just like where I, I feel there. And so I love that we're doing this here, because it's the first time, and I learned a lot from this group that I didn't know.
Yeah. As far as the court piece, again, I apologize to you for the way that things went, but that is actual protocol. There is no way for me to know if you, or David, or Faith, or anybody had the verified signatures. I went through that process, I had to verify my own signatures, which I did. And then when I went in and turned in my signatures, I asked them, so how do you guys verify these? And they said, we don't. This is coming straight out of the Yuma County Superintendent's Office. We don't verify them. I said, what do you mean you don't verify them? Who does?
Could you have called me and said, hey, did you verify your things? I just did that, you didn't do that. You had my number, you called me for, but I don't, this is again-
But it doesn't matter, but that's-
This is kind of all talk.
Yeah. Moving forward.
It's a good point you got, yeah.
Mr. Aubarri.
Okay, alright.
Just, uh, looking at all this here, you know, one of the things that I wanna let you all know is that, um, me being the only Mexican-American up here bilingual board member, when 75% of our students are Hispanic, okay? Now, I'm conservative, I'm a law enforcement officer, and that right there puts me apart from my Latino community. They, so what, you know, they have that stigma, right, and being conservative. I've had more interviews on the English-speaking TV, and when I go to our local one, it's always, no. They don't give me a chance to, to talk in Spanish. Y puedo hablar con la gente para que sepa que tenemos un miembro de la mesa directiva here, representing, helping them, to know that they can call me, to know that we can have, and that's what I look forward to, is having a meeting with them, okay? And that's where I've been, but when, when, when you write this in, yes, there is a division. And instead of saying, hey, we got one person, can we talk to them? And I would have loved to put that out, but to this day, I've gone to Octavio, Mr. Octavio, who's the lead anchor of Telemundo here, I've given him my card, I said, hey, I'm running, hey, I just won, hey, I just got elected. Nunca, never. And that's what, what my concern is, that we worked hard, all of us worked hard to get where we're at, you know? And I can't get any type of, uh, you know, information out there, give me a chance and, and, and talk to me. And that's what my frustration is. Because we don't have an act, actual representation of the community, alright, in, in District One. When we have Fourth Avenue not having a PTO, they don't have one. And I would love to take that on and say, hey, come, but again, that distrust, that division that they've created, now he's, he's conservative, es uno de ellos, okay? And that's something that I'm concerned about. I'm also concerned when, Monica, when you gave me that book, read it cover to cover, that we have 11 teachers that have left and 14 support staff, they're leaving us. Are we gonna have Ed, we'd like to see Ed get interviews, maybe talk to him, hey, why are you leaving us? That's my concern. So I just wanted to bring that, thank you very much.
To that point, I didn't even think about, which is a good point, whatever, whenever we do this resolution, probably should be in Spanish too. So thank you, as you were saying that, I thought about it, we are committed to trying to communicate with our families and all of that stuff to the, and I think part of that is we as a board have to be more unified, we might not always agree, but we have to be more unified, because then they're gonna stop associating with whatever side it's in, and they're gonna associate us as supporting the district. So I agree with you saying. So besides, besides that piece, is there any other piece that we're wanting, or are we feeling okay with?
Yes, I'm, so we have no influence, impact on public schools. We, we have influence, impact on District One, right? That's our focus, that's what-
Well, we are a public school, so we do have influence within-
Public school, but I mean, when it says transparent confidence, I mean, I, I can't pledge my allegiance to public school, as was brought up earlier, because not all public schools are worthy of being, I mean, you've got some bad schools, maybe not here, but our influence is on District One, right? And that's our-
Well, just like ESA dollars, there's bad people using them. I mean, this is the world of bad businesses, bad employees, bad. But I mean, if you're saying ensuring our policies and actions build trust, transparent, transparency and competence in District One's public education access, District One's-
Confidence in District One.
District One on that last bullet is what you're saying?
Yeah, cause I would, I would prefer that we're telling the public, that, that we are here to support District One, that that is our focus, that we are here for them. We're here just to, our, part of our process is to support the children and build that environment around the children. Whether every policy that we make, every dollar we spend, every decision we make, has the children in mind. And it's those things that we do, building the facilities, getting the money, that's, that's how it's designed, right? You, you build the institution around the student, you know, the educators, the administrators. You have to have the right ones there to be successful. So like on the first one, you know, D1, but it's cornerstone of a healthy democracy. Can you help me understand that a little bit better?
I mean, this is, the, the United States of America still serves the major, I mean, I think you had said a number at one point, how many, how many kids are being still served by this institution, the institution of public education? And so we cannot have healthy generations if we dismantle the system in which is educating the majority of our population.
Gotcha.
So that's, to me, again, you have multiple methods of being educated. And, but for our world, the world as it compartmentalizing here, the five of us, our duty is to, any child coming through those doors is providing them with the best public education that we can, so then they can grow and evolve and be great citizens of this world. So that's why that is there. And then the second piece too, is that stating that public schools do serve all students. So, you know, when my child comes home today and says, I got new kids in my third grade class, and I'm like, on testing day? That's interesting to me. Like, where'd they come from? Oh, they came from the charter school down the way. I'm like, that's interesting to me. I wonder why that this move happened during this time? And why we're getting these children that we don't, we haven't educated yet, but their scores are going to impact our grade absolutely. To me, that's a question I have. And again, what's the beauty, but also a curse at times, is that we're serving all kids, we don't get to counsel them out. We don't get to say, no, you don't fit our mold, no, you can't speak, so you don't get to, we don't get to do that. And nor do I want us to do that. But that's where I think it's a, we are different, and I want us to own it, and I want us to be passionate about what we do that is different than others. And it doesn't mean we're gonna crap on other people. It means that we're just owning what we do, and we serve all kids, so that's why I wrote it that way.
Okay. I saw a little passion there.
I love it, I love it.
How are, like, Anthony, the rest of, taking out the political divisiveness piece, and how are you feeling, and David, about the rest, Jeff, about the, you're good, David?
Yes.
Okay.
I can help with the Spanish portion.
Yes.
Street slang, right? Not proper?
Well, it depends, it depends which one.
I can help with hola.
What?
Hola.
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 That might be the extent.
I don't think that's anywhere in here.
The reaffirms its full and unwavering support for public district schools as a vital public institution?
We changed that.
You've already changed that?
Unwavering support to make Yuma School District One a vital, that's what we were talking about, right?
Nice.
That's good with you?
I haven't been, yeah, I haven't been scribbling and writing.
Sorry, yeah, yeah.
I've tried.
I like it.
Thank you, Jeff.
I think we make those changes.
Is it best, uh, do you have the notes of it, or I can write the notes and send it, and then you can send it to everyone, so then they can verify before anything goes to...
Yes, my scribbles from...
Okay, I can do what, my notes, and then, but then everyone to see it, I think that that's obviously, we want to make sure.
Yeah, go to Monica, and she can get that out.
Yeah, is that good?
Anybody can make comments on it, right? It's not a violation of a meeting?
I think you just BCCs or...
You didn't accept it, you just...
Oh, yeah, you're just making comments versus voting on it, okay.
Right, so it'd be best not to BCC, send individuals.
Okay. Is that right, or they can send all?
BCC, okay.
Oh, yeah, because if you hit reply to all, it still, it doesn't go there, only the invites to the meetings.
What's that?
Meeting invites.
If it's a calendar invite, it does, yeah.
It's a calendar invite.
So when Mr., uh, when David sends back, "I'll be there," we all get it.
Yeah, because it's, um, yeah, when it goes on to the calendar, yeah.
You can't, you can't communicate.
Oh, you don't have to reply back, because what's...
You're not replaying, you're not...
Do not reply.
No, no.
If you would say, if you would have said, "I'm gonna be there and I'm voting this way," then you did, yeah, you just said you'd be there, I'm glad, I'm glad that I knew you were gonna be there, it's great.
Toughest term on the board I've ever seen.
See, that's why, hey, I'm still learning, okay? So I keep my mouth shut, so now, I just learned this one.
Well, I didn't know that it would do that.
Neither did I, I could have wrote something in Spanish.
Can't you just reply or...
Oh, I have to say yes or no, and then the calendar invite will let me know that you...
I'll just call you on the phone next time, I'll just call you.
But if you send me all BCC, right, you, you, and you hit reply, it only goes to the sender.
Yeah, that's what I thought, there's a reply, reply all.
Calendar invite, it sends it to everybody.
There isn't just a reply option, reply and reply all on both?
But the whole idea of a BCC is so that you, you, you disconnect the, the communication from anybody else, and it's only between the receiver and the sender, but the calendar invite's obviously...
Yeah, the calendar is because it tracks who's there, that's what not fancy, it's all, yeah.
I think there is an option for both, but when you do BCC, it eliminates the option of a reply to all, because you can't send it back to everyone.
And it's right, so...
On the calendar invite, you can.
So like, I'm sending out the weekly report, I BCC it, so that if you have a question about it, or you have a comment about something, it's on there, only I get it when you respond.
Nobody else.
So, uh, tip from an HR world, if I'm emailing an employee, but like, there's an issue, and I want like their manager to know, but I also don't want the employee to be our, I can BCC, so that manager is getting it, but there's the unknown to the like, CC, that employee or vice versa, and a manager, and there's a...
So the employee thinks it's coming directly from you only, right?
Yeah, like, you, I mean, that, that's where, or you, again, to this piece where you don't, I'm, I'm writing to 1,500 people at Gowan, that's how many people are on this list, sir, I do BCC, because if people start to say even, "Congratulations," if everyone is getting the 1,500 email, yeah.
Yeah.
So that is a trick, but you have to like, you have to go into your functions to do it in your email.
Glad I got just six employees.
So I think we've covered everything on the agenda, so then we'll, uh, we'll get that from Monica here pretty soon. Anybody have any other questions?
I have something I'd say after you gamble it out, off the record.
All right, during this meeting.